So I'm just gonna test the mics, are you guys able to hear me okay? Excellent, thank you so much. So, welcome. Thank you for joining us at the Select Board meeting. Uh, this is a joint meeting, part of it's gonna be a joint meeting with the, uh, Stone Equal Opportunity Committee. Uh, it's Tuesday, December 3rd. The time right now is 7:02. Uh, so we have President in the Hall, Select Board Members Lou Gieto, Member Debra Roberts, Member Joe McCrisky, and Vice Chair Scott Carrera, as well as myself. Uh, so with seeing a quorum present, I called to order, uh, this meeting. The, um, first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. If you're able to rise, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So beyond that, our first order of business is an executive session, but before going into executive session, a member of our community, an important, a very beloved member of our community has passed away, and so I'd like to pass the, uh, mic over to Vice Chair Carrera to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those of you in the audience and at home that don't know, but, um, we've had a death in our, in our town, and it's a death that's, that's deep and sorrowful because it's the wife of Rabbi Jonathan Hausman, the Rabbi Leader of, um, the Avator Congregation in Stoughton. Susan was sick for a long time, and the Rabbi was there with his daughter Jacqueline by her side, and, and they did what they could do. But it's, this is a true love story of old, that a religious leader and his wife, together, led a congregation of love and respect, um, for their group, but not only for their group, they crossed lines to other religions and brought them in. They put on a Christmas party for the Catholics, which I love to donate to because it's, it's amazing to me that the Jewish people do this for the needy Catholics, and, and it's, it's a great thing. Rabbi Hausman is probably the longest-serving, right now, religious leader in our town. He's been at, um, Avator for 28 years, and I, I met him there my first, my first, his first day, and it was quite an experience if, if you don't know, because he's a very colorful gentleman. And, um, but most of all, it's, it's his love for our town. He's very passionate, very compassionate, very passionate and compassionate in everything he does. He's a thinker, he's a leader, and his, his wife was right there with him. Sometimes you would think she's just quiet and nearby the side, but, um, she was a very strong woman, and his daughter's a very, very nice girl. I've been with her when we did the cooking at the, uh, at the Avator. But, there'll be a memorial service Wednesday night, tomorrow, between 6:00 and 8:00 at the Avator. People can go there and present their condolences to the Rabbi, he will be on site. There's gonna be a memorial service too. So if you, anytime between 6:00 and 8:00, if you can only stay a few minutes and leave, it's, it's just, they're expecting that, and, and that's the respect. So it's between 6:00 and 8:00 tomorrow, Wednesday night, at Avator on Central Street. But it is with a heavy heart that I'd like to say that the Hausmans are our neighbors. He's the Rabbi, he's a family man, he came here to settle in Stoughton, he took care of the congregation in a loving and leading way, but in turn comforting all those in times of sorrow. So I'd like to ask everybody to stand and put a prayer in their heart, and let's comfort Thank you. So if any, if any other board members have anything they would like to say about the Rabbi, I'd, I'd welcome it because, um, this is one of the hardest things I've had to do. He's truly, truly a good friend. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would agree with everything Scott said. Susan, I've known her well for a long time, Rabbi, just great people, but unfortunately, we all suffer losses, and it never makes it any more comfortable. But I do have two, three that, to mention quickly because I know that we, we do have a full agenda, but these are the times that we really need to remember those members of our community. We lost recently Captain Jake Reed, a longtime retired police officer in town of Stoughton, attained the rank of Captain, and he was probably retired as long as he served as a police officer in the town of Stoughton, which is great, that people that actually get to enjoy their retirement and live a healthy one. So our memories go up with, with Jack Reed, as well as, um, Beb, um, my gosh, Betty Moraglia. Betty Moraglia was, yeah, lawyer. She passed at 91 on the day before Thanksgiving. She was an avid member of the Old Stoughton Musical Society, and Betty could also be found at different days, in the older days, at the train station when it was open, and she would sell her knitting to benefit the, uh, the Old Stoughton Musical Society, and then she was, uh, when the train station closed down, then she was here at Town Hall, and making mittens and gloves and so forth, and she was definitely a treasure. We also have the mother of Atha Quello, you know, our maintenance person here, and anybody, everybody knows already, his mother passed away as well. So for those three families that are our neighbors, as Scott mentioned, our neighbors, and we are a Stoughton family, I would ask that we all just take a moment of silence to offer our own thoughts to the families.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. So the next order of business is our executive session. We have two items. Item B is no longer necessary for the evening, so we'll be going into executive session to cover item A. This is executive session, subject to the Chair's declaration to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, in the matter of McGowan versus McNulty. So we will be entering executive session and returning to open session shortly. So for the time being, our open session is briefly recessed, and we'll return shortly. Thank you so much. So apology, I'm gonna reopen the session real quick. I apologize, everybody. I, I think the, uh, the turkey's still affecting me, and I apologize in advance, but we do actually need to take a roll call vote to go into executive session. So I'd like to just, really quick, is there a motion to enter executive session?
Second.
So the motion was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. So in favor or against, Mr. McCrisky?
Aye.
Mr. McCrisky, sorry, Mr. Carrera?
Aye.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gieto? I vote yes as well, and so we will be returning to open session shortly. Thank you. Call back to order the, um, December 3rd meeting of the Stone Select Board, now 7:39. The next order of business, actually before we go into that, I do wanna mention that I'm gonna be, for anybody who's, who's anticipating this, uh, the, one of the final items on our agenda is to discuss next steps for South, South School. After that, on the agenda, it shows that citizens' comments, Select Board comments, town manager comments will come after. I imagine a lot of people will wanna speak on that, so I'm gonna move up the citizen comments to right before we discuss that. So, uh, we'll have the S E O C, which we're about to have, revenue projections, a public hearing, and then citizen comments. Uh, I don't know the exact time, but I'm guessing somewhere around 8:30, that will fell, we'll get, someone will get to that. So in the meantime, this is, this portion is a joint meeting with the Stone Equal Opportunity Committee, and so I'm going to turn this over to the Chair of that committee, who's our Select Board Member, Debra Roberts, to call to order their meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, first, before I call the meeting to order of the Stoughton Equal Opportunity, is anyone in the audience that's a member of the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee?
We have two, two members.
Oh, please step forward. Okay. I wanted to call a roll call vote, but before I did that, I wanted to be able to see you and have everyone in position. Hello, nice seeing you. So I'm calling by name to see if we have a quorum present. First, Vice Chair Betty Sabree.
Present.
Next is Member Fay Howard.
Present.
Next is Tamisha Civil. She may be online. Next is Cristiana Odunzi.
I'm here, I'm online.
Thank you. Next is Maggie Juisty. Next is Steve Cavey.
Present.
And I am present. I call a present is present. Have a, I would like a motion to call the S E O C to order, please.
I make motion to have the S E O C.
Motion was made by Vice Chair Sabree.
I second.
And seconded by Fay Howard. The intent of this discussion is to bring-
Ms. Roberts, if you could speak up-
The intent of the-
We seem to do the roll, roll call vote.
Oh, roll call, roll call vote?
I can't hear over here either.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Roll, roll call vote, Betty Sabree, present. Fay Howard?
Left of-
Present.
Thank you very much, and this is a vote to open the meeting. Roll call vote, since we have some online. On the vote to open the meeting, Betty Sabree, Vice Chair Betty Sabree. Yes?
Yes.
Um, Fay Howard?
Yes.
Tamisha Civil? Cristiana Odunzi? Maggie Juisty? Steve Cavey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The intent of this discussion is to bring the town and the school committee together. With that said, Vice Chair Sabree and Ms. Howard, would you please take the lead on the discussion?
Yes, and do you have slides?
If you would, when you speak, would you mind just bringing the mics pretty close to you? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. My hearing's not that great, and-
No, my voice doesn't carry, so that's good to know.
How is this? Can you hear me? One, two, three? Thank you, Jilda.
Um, my name is Betty Sabree, Vice Chair of the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee. In 2020, you, the Select Board, approved a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Our committee is named the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee. Today, we would like to share a concept to consistently and eventually, efficiently serve the town of Stoughton, which involves collaborating with the Stoughton School Committee and updating general bylaw. Tonight's agenda, we'll speak of the purpose, the mission of, um, the purpose and mission of the S E O C, give you some background, action, next steps, and the ask.
I'll talk about the purpose. So the purpose statement is that the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is there to increase cooperation and understanding and dialogue among the Stoughton residents, commercial and institutional entities, and other stakeholders of diverse cultural, religious, socio-economic, racial, and ethnic, and experiential, experiential backgrounds. The D E I Committee will work to welcome and promote inclusion and a sense of belonging throughout the town for anyone who resides or attends a school or a faith community in, in Stoughton, or otherwise visit Stoughton for any reason.
As for the mission, the mission of the Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee is to provide advice and recommendations regarding municipal town strategic planning and establishing Stoughton, Massachusetts as a welcoming community, providing a sense of belonging to everyone, valuing diversity regardless of race, ethnicity, nationality, religion, economic class, age, gender, identity, sexual orientation, mental and physical ability, and learning styles. A community where all people can thrive, where they live, work, and play, in a community where everyone has an equal vote and a voice in the way government works.
The Stoughton Equal Opportunity Committee was formed in 2020. It was formed as an advisor to the Select Board. The committee is made up of seven members, five members appointed by the Select Board, and two Select Board liaisons. Several municipal staff members attended the remap training, and this was, and there was a transfer of knowledge to the S E O C members. Over the course of the last few years, the committee has led a number of efforts, personnel, changes to the personnel bylaws as approved at town meeting, expanding the human resource recruitment outreach, internal diversity training, which took place in 2023, and career fairs and community events.
What are the actions? Through the S E O C work, we have come to realize that in order to consistently and efficiently serve the town of Stoughton, the S E O C would like to permanently partner with the Stoughton School Committee and memorialize current general bylaws and create a bylaw incorporating the Stoughton School Committee. The Select Board does not have jurisdiction to approve Stoughton School Committee representation to the S E O C. For that reason, we are respectfully seeking a change in the general bylaw. By working together, the combined committee will be able to consistently and efficiently serve the town of Stoughton, benefiting students and community members. The collaboration between town government and schools can be, take, can take many forms, and here are a few, um, suggestions. Policy development, resource allocation, community engagement, training in professional development, data collection and analysis, program implementation, monitoring and evaluation, advocacy, celebrating diversity, and building partnerships.
So what are the next steps? We'd like to discuss with the school and other appropriate stakeholders, socialize the content with the school superintendent and the school committee, and create awareness that this is a draft document of the concept and the beginning of the process, so we expect that there will be more dialogue and feedback. Therefore, the final version may be slightly different than what you see today.
And what is the ask? We ask for the endorsement of the bylaw, bylaw change in concept, to support the effort where D E I lives within the bylaw, and to use town meeting, standing committee as a
Thank you, Ms. Howard, and thank you, Vice Chair Sabree. This is a draft document, and this draft document is a working document. Some have shown a disagreement to the name of D E I, where the formal name of our group is Stoughton Equal Opportunity. That means we do serve all of the residents of the town of Stoughton. We do serve the underserved residents of the town of Stoughton. That includes our veterans, and that includes our, those with disability. I now ask if Dr. Joe Baeda is on the line. He had a few words to share. If he's not, then I would ask for special privilege, Vice Chairman Cavey, when he does join, because he's in conflict, he's at a school committee meeting, that he have ability to join and share his thoughts on the concept and the idea. What we're asking specifically is, we are a member-appointed board by the Select Board, of five members for the Select Board. We're asking for four additional members to be appointed by the school committee. So we'll be school, and we already work together, we're just formalizing it. Just recently, we worked together on the Frederick Richards event. Prior to that, um, we worked together on Juneteenth events, M L K events, a lot of structural type of events. They started out with us, that is, members of, of the school staff slash committee, uh, when we had originally started with our, our grant, that's the remap grant. We had a school committee member on the Select Board, I'm sorry, on the S E O C committee, and we saw what a benefit that is to have more of the school appoint, school committee appointed members to join with us and work with us and continue to do all the good things because we are one Stoughton. Thank you very much, and once again, when Dr. Joe Baeda presents himself, I would like a special privilege for him to talk and, and share his ideas. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So currently, Mr. Baeda, I'm sorry, Dr. Baeda's not on the line, uh, but when he, uh, hops on, uh, we will, of course, give him an opportunity to speak. So for tonight, uh, the, the bylaw, uh, the draft bylaw is, has been provided to us, is in our package. My hope is that everyone had a chance to read it, uh, but I, I will just ask, ask, Ms. Roberts, uh, would you like for the, the Select Board to offer suggestions, questions, comments at this point, or, or is there something else you're looking for at this moment?
Yes, I would, and to save time and effort, they can send us email after this, this meeting, or they can share with us now, so the public can hear, that we are open, we are nimble, we are approachable, to make the change. The, the two things, or three things that we're asking for is the, to include school-appointed members, have a larger membership size, and to memorialize what we're already doing, which is working with the school.
Perfect, so I'll, I'll open it up to the members of the Select Board. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Was there any involvement of the school committee during this, or is it, if we're, if they're going to be, the school's gonna be involved, the school committee, have they had this presentation? Have they had input? Were they invited to be here tonight?
Informally, they have received this document. Informally, the, uh, some have given feedback, but formally, I will be, the S E O C and I will be presenting to them, so the public can hear, and we can have a finished document, something, a document that we can all agree upon, something that we can all abide by, and something that we can all be proud of.
I'd, I'd like to know, I'd like to hear from the school committee members as well, as, you know, Dr. Baeda as well, before we take a vote. I, I think I would have liked to have seen a working group before we got to this point, you know, to get all that work done and say that we did this between the schools and, you know, and, and then formalize it. So at least when we go to take the bylaw change there, we're gonna present something substantial, you know, and, uh, so it's, it seems that we're, tonight, we're talking about just how we're gonna do it and, and your, your goals, and I can understand that. Uh, and I know what we're doing, and we're doing good work, uh, but I just, I would really like to hear from the superintendent and the school committee members, even if it's through Dr. Baeda, from the school committee members.
I understand-
They're gonna have to make it a policy on their end as well to support that.
Mm-hmm. I understand that, and I understand your process, and I appreciate your process, and, and you saying openly and honestly what you want and what you would like to see, because we can abide by that. We're not, we believe in transparency and openness, and I know this is a step forward for us, but it's something that we're already doing, we're just memorializing it. So I appreciate you saying this. Thank you so much, Mr. McCrisky, Mr. Joseph McCrisky. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Carrera? All yours.
At, at the last meeting, um, Joe wasn't here, and Lou had left, um, and I asked that if we were gonna do this again, that the school committee and whoever else they were gonna bring would be sitting in this audience, not on that screen, not someplace else. I want them in front, so I can ask them questions. This board has drawn up this E O C, which in my eyes, I think it's enough. I don't think it needs to expand, I don't think it needs to dig into the greater things. I think the mindset is already with these people that are appointed there, and to make it a standing committee with chief that, that basically is gonna now hand tie the town manager and any person that is a department head in this building. They have been trained, they have taken things, they understand how they're supposed to, um, vet employees and stuff like that. It's not up to us up here to basically bias what they're doing or anything else. People know if they wanna apply for a job or be treated, whatever, there's avenues to go. I don't think this building needs to be saddled with any more work, and least of all, without having the, the school committee here, they have the most sensitive issue that I've said before. They have children. It's not just all games and party. What we do affects their growth and their line of thinking. I don't wanna start changing what the school teachers are doing, I don't wanna change what's going on in this building. That man right there is the town manager. He's in charge. I don't think we should be expanding this, this committee any more than what it is. They haven't come and said to us, you know, hey, this is what we're doing and all that. Alls I've heard is, from this, is Frederick Richard thing, which was a great thing, he was happy, Juneteenth and M L A, M L K Day. What else have we done? Have we had a needy person, coke drive? Have we had anything? Can we help you find permanent residency? That, to me, is equal opportunity, not just trying to tell what I'm going through, it's, I hate to say this, but we're starting to almost put like in an affirmative action move here, and I'm, and I'm, I don't wanna go that way. I don't wanna alienate certain people. We never even talked about the, the, um, the, the, the Army people or any, like, the Vet- We never even talked about the, 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 the Army people or any, like the veterans. That never, that never even came across the board. It's, in this thing here, it doesn't even mention that. Alls it says is systemic racism. I haven't seen that. I've seen more things coming together in this town and being good than systemic racism. It isn't just about systemic racism. There's a lot of other things going on in the town. I, I just can't, maybe there's got to be more dialogue, like Joe says, a real, a working group or something, but this, this push through. I rely on the, the group that we chose to, to put things together. I rely on the E O C. People should be able to go to them. They should be on the website, not, I'm going to tell you right now, Brockton, Mass has thrown the D E I out of their school system, and it's in the paper. I'll bring it in so you can see it.
No, thank you, Mr. Carrera.
I just want to tell you, they, I'm just, I'm just telling you what's, what's happened. They took it out, and you know how many people were mad? Three. Three. Two people who ran it and one person who was trying to get involved in it. That's it. Then the other day, I hear Michigan University was in the red, $350,000 because they brought in the D E I. They put people in place, the people couldn't handle the work, so they had to be bought out, not at their pay, little larger. This stuff is getting, I don't know, beyond the field of what it was made for. That's why I was so happy when I heard E O C. It made me feel, geez, this is, this is good. People aren't going to push back or there's not going to be over the top. I have a right to my opinion. I know you're mad. I know you're probably not happy with it, but I'm just saying.
Oh, don't put, don't put words in my mouth and don't put feelings in my soul.
Don't be talking about your soul or anything. I, I trust you, but I'm trying to tell you, this is what I see and what people have said to me.
I can, I can respect that, and this is the reason we are presenting to you and the board at this point. We did, we have a laundry list of things that we've done outside of, of M L K or Juneteenth or Frederick Richards. We actually most recently had an event where, which was the Diversity Supplier, which helped small business, women-owned business, and LGBTQ on and on become certified so they can get government grants. When we talked about the bylaw change that the town meeting helped to get approved and we moved forward on that, and now that is final, we did work with Mr. Coulter, and we worked with Deanna and Tracy and the S E O C and attorneys to make that happen because the language was archaic and hard to read. So we are not trying to focus on race. We are trying to say, we are Stoughton. We are equal. There are things that we see because we focus on it, and it's like you, Mr. Carrera. When you see things about trucks and why we shouldn't purchase a truck or we don't need a truck, we, we can't see that because you live and breathe that every, every day. Whereas we are living and breathing and trying to bring the town together every day. And it's not based on race. It is not affirmative action. What it is, if you remove the name D E I, the equality and equity that we are, type of work that we're doing, you can call it by any other name, tomato, tomato, it's still the same good work. We still appreciate all in this town. And I wanted to defer to Vice Chair Sabri and Member Fay, and maybe some leniency with Ms. Odunzi and if Tanisha Civil, who was just recently elected Governor's Council, so Governor's Council-elect, and Maggie Juisty, who's all a longtime residence of the Stoughton, of the town of Stoughton, if you can share. And if there's anyone that works for the school system, the Stoughton Public School System, if you're online and you would like to share how well we engage the community for the, all the things that we do, please speak up because it's not one-sided.
I did want to comment, we, the events that, the events that-
Do you want other people on the board to speak?
Oh, just one minute. Through you, Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Gito.
The last presidential election showed a huge issue, that this was a huge issue across the nation. And I, I like a lot of the things that you're saying. I would like, I will tell you that I am not going to vote for or against this. What I'm going to do is vote either present or abstain, and I will tell you why. It is because there are a lot of different opinions that I don't think that the Board of Selectmen needs to sponsor this article. And I will tell you why I don't think that. It takes only 10 signatures for the citizens to put this before town meeting, and it is before town meeting that the decision is going to be made. This is not a trivial change. It is a charter change. And what we had before was having a committee to report to the Board of Selectmen. But this is a charter change that will affect all of the activities in the town, and the way a charter change occurs is through town meeting, not by the Board of Selectmen. And I applaud a number of the things that are here, and I also have some issues with some of the other things that are here. And I, I shouldn't go into all of that now, but what I think, your presentation regarding, or the presentation of the group, not yours, is to say, we want to bring everybody together.
Yes.
There are a number of ways of doing that that don't necessarily require the Board of Selectmen to be the driver in doing that. And so from that point of view, I think that it would be easy for you to get the number of people that you have in the audience and the number of people that are online, to get 10 signatures and put this before town meeting, and it will go in, and it will be discussed in the same manner that it would otherwise be discussed, and either vote it up or down. The other thing that concerns me right now, and you address this, is that you haven't had the discussion, and Ms. McCrisky mentioned this as well, with the school committee. And there are things that may change in it as time goes on. I think if you took the time to make the changes and got the signatures, you would accomplish the same thing. And you would not put, necessarily put the Board of Selectmen front and center saying, you know, you've got to all approve this and, and get up and, and say that. We can do that individually, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's the right place.
Let's just, to speak as well, if you don't mind.
Yes.
So, as a, a practice, I don't know if it's gone back the entire time I've been here, before, at least for the, the last, you know, five years or more, there's been an expectation that if a Select Board member puts forwards an article that they would like inserted into the town meeting warrant, as a professional courtesy, we've done it in the past, we've done it for Mr. Gito. I know we've done it for myself, we've done it for Mr. Carrera.
You've also not done it for Mr. Gito, by the way.
I'm sorry?
I said you've also not done it for Mr. Gito, by the way.
So, so we can choose to, to, you know, not move forward with this. I personally, to a, a point that Ms. Roberts was making, I, you know, I very much gravitated towards one in particular. One is that when we, when we are focused on our own area of expertise, we can be a little bit blind to some areas that we are not familiar with. There's a lot of questions that come before the Select Board for which I have no, no training, and I can, I will only understand it as well as, you know, the, the next person. And many times, we're lucky enough to have a member of the Board who has some area of expertise in this. As Ms. Roberts mentioned, there's a lot of areas that Mr. Carrera has unique expertise. There's a lot of areas where each of us has unique expertise, and, and we, we leverage that and we, we use it. There are certainly also times when we need information for which none of the members of the Board have any expertise. We, we rely on financial experts and legal experts, engineering experts. There's, there's a variety of experts that we, we do rely on. And I think that the, for me personally, the value in this, I'll, there's a few things I want to say. One is the value in this, I think, is, is personally, I believe, self-evident, that there, there are areas for which I will always have a blind spot, but that doesn't change the fact that there are problems that we need to address, and I just won't be able to see them. And, and so I, I find value in that, having, I, I have already found value in having our current advisory board provide a lot of insights. And it's been, you know, a pleasure getting to know everybody on it, some of the hardest working people I've ever met. So the, I guess the question is, is this ready to, is this ready to evolve? Is this, is this appropriate to evolve into something different? Personally, I, I think that, you know, town meeting would start May 5th, so six, six months and two days from now. I think if this has deficiencies, I think that, that time would be well-used to, to look into it, to poll different people who might have some, some additional insights. I know that our town council had vetted this, so as far as the, the, you know, legal structure of it, I think, I feel strongly that it will pass muster. But I think having people debate the pros and cons of, of it as a whole, having debate the pros and cons of it in, in its parts, will, will only add value to, to our understanding of, of this as an area that's, that's worthy of, of, of understanding. As far as whether or not we should or should not go forward with this, I think we're, we're at least six months out from having really had, had this vetted to the point where we can all say definitively yes or no. And my hope is that, that, you know, that if this, you know, if we determine collectively that this isn't a good plan, for whatever reason, we, we will continue to use the S E O C as an advisory board. But I think that having the opportunity to have this vet, vetted by the school committee, by the Select Board, by town meeting, by the variety of boards and committees that will be looking into this, you know, personally, I've never heard of a question that was, you know, should never be asked, you know? I think, I think people need to, to examine this. And in my own view, the S E O C has been very successful. Mostly, I, I think I attributed that to the unique drive of many of the members. Everybody works hard, but from the day I met Ms. Roberts, I never thought I'd ever be able to beat her in a race. She always, she works harder than 10 Steve Cavies. So, a very hardworking woman, but all of the members of the S E O C work very hard, and I'd like to see if, you know, them have an opportunity to have a vision at least examined, if not actualized. So personally, I'm in favor of it. I think it's worth exploring the questions, asking the questions, and within six months, determining collectively as a community whether or not this is the right path for us. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I saw Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Joe Baeda stepped in through. Can I have consideration, please, to have him say a few words and then we can move on?
It's not the first time I've cleared a room. Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. I, I'm, the current school committee is having a meeting, and I believe they're reviewing and undertaking the request that has come forward for the school department to be involved. I do know that the town side has also, through last year's budget, started working on topics related to equal opportunity. I also recognize that there's a changing world going on around us right now around certain acronyms and, and words. I will speak from the, from the perspective of this. You're talking to a guy who is one of the first elected people in this town who came off the boat. You're talking to a guy who had teachers who spoke my language, knew my culture, knew where I went to church, came over to my home, and so on and so forth. Fifty-six percent of the students who attend Stoughton Public Schools are children of color.
Wow.
You couldn't say that 10 years ago. Matter of fact, the number went majority-minority in 2022. The fact is, there's a lot of topics here that we can undertake. As the educational leader of the community, balance is important, making sure that it's open is important, and most important to me as a superintendent, it's important for my kids to know that this community does believe in having these discussions and taking on topics that are difficult. To me, that only makes us a better world. It's not indoctrination. It is not about one side against the other. It's about people working together genuinely, like I believe this community has done, at least for the 50 years that I've lived in this town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, what we would like is the opportunity to continue to work on this document so it is, once again, I'll say it again, it's something that we can all be proud of and we can live with, and we are knowing that all of us are working together toward a common goal, and that's the bigger we, that's the bigger goal. Because we've done it before, and we can do it again.
So the request is for a, a motion to, I want to make sure I understand the, the exact ask. So you want to be able to present this to, to town meeting. So the insertion of this as an article is, you know, will be something we'd be talking about probably in, I believe, February. So we have a little bit of time before we get to that point, but you want to continue to work on, on the draft itself.
That's great. So this is a concept. I want to continue to work, work Smith. I want to make edits. I want to talk to Lou Gito. What is it about, what is it that is, I, I use rubbing the wrong way, but you, you know what I mean, that's a, a very informal comment to say? What is rubbing you the wrong way? Because what we're looking for is the essence, the essence of working together, Stoughton Equal Opportunity with the school-appointed members and the town-appointed members, working together, prioritizing the task that is in front of us. Prioritize it. We can't do it all, but we can do some. And what is that some? We won't know until we have a think tank and put it together and talk about it. Normalize the conversation. That's what we're talking about.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm ready to make a motion. You know, we'll talk, and we have people that have been-
You know, we'll talk, and we have people that have been here waiting for 15 minutes after our scheduled time. Dr. Baeda, is he still here? You didn't come in on any boat. Dr. Baeda, thank you for your words, though. It's important to know, and, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the select board support Ms. Roberts and the committee to have the dialogue with the school department, the superintendent, super, school, school committee as well, come back with a suitable article that we can install and be ready for the next town meeting. That's my motion.
Perfect. So motion is made by?
I'll second it.
Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Ms. Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, so I guess the next is abstentions, so we have two abstentions. So the motion passes, three yes, zero nos, and two abstentions. So for the members of the S E O C, thank you for your hard work. Ms. Roberts, thank you for your work. We look forward to seeing, you know, this document polished up. Yep.
Before I close the meeting of the S E O C, I would like to personally thank my fellow select board members, Mr. Lou Gito, Chairman Steve Kavy, Vice Chair Scott Carrera, and Mr. Joe McCrisky. Thank you all. On that, I would like a motion to close the meeting of the S E O C. And that was from Vice Chair Betty Sabree. And can I get a second?
Second, Betty.
Oh, I heard that, Ms. Christiana O'Dunsey online, that was the section. And on the vote to close, Ms. O'Dunsey? Say yes for closing?
Yes.
Yes? Ms. Vice Chair Sabree, Ms. Howard? Ms. Civil, I don't think she's online, and Mr. Juicy, I don't think he's online, but I vote in favor to close the meeting as well. So thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so the, the next item on our agenda is the 20, sorry, the fiscal year 2026 revenue projections. Presenting is Ms. Luskey, our financial director. Wonderful to see you. I haven't, I don't think we've crossed paths in a little while. It's great seeing you again.
No, we haven't. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the select board.
Madam Chair, excuse me, Biz. Mr. Chairman, may I give a brief introduction?
Of course.
Never before, since I've been in state government or municipal government, have I ever been involved with, have had the pleasure of being involved with, someone who teaches municipal finance to municipalities throughout the state. And through this process, we've now finished the budget, but we're starting with the revenue projections. Biz has taught our finance team more in one month than I've learned in 15 years. The level of detail, the level of undoing things that have been done, perhaps going back decades and fixing it, has been a real pleasure to watch and be involved in. So before Elizabeth begins her presentation, I just wanted to publicly congratulate her. She has been working 12 to 15 hours a day, six days a week, and Biz, we're all very grateful to you, so thankful.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. I have paper. Tonight, we do have the presentation for the estimated revenue for fiscal year 2026, and the presentation is a quick six pages long. I will go through it, and then we can ask questions at the end. The FY '25 property tax levy of $82,928.07 plus 2.5% provides an estimated property tax levy in 2026 of $85,1,822. The estimated new growth for FY '26 is $800,000. And what we're doing is we're taking a conservative approach. We had a large new growth this fiscal year at $1.7 million, and that had to do with a lot of TIPS or tax incentive programs that were coming off the books. Excluded debt for 2026, school and fire, is $4,618,400 for the school and $672,375 for the fire department. The cherry sheet estimated revenue is calculated at 3% increase as per our directive. It is important to note that the final cherry sheet data was received in August of 2024, and the town should expect to receive the final data around the same time in August 2025 for the 2026 budgets. As we know, we had budget adjustments that we did in November, this past November, and there is a potential that we could have budget adjustments again next November. Cherry sheet assessment and charges are now included in Department 820 in the general operating budget and are calculated at 3% increase as per budget guidelines proposed by the town manager and approved by the select board on October 15th. This action provides a greater level of transparency as to how the charges impact the overall budget. The local receipts are estimated at 90% of 2024 actual revenue received. It is important to note that revenue received under local receipts category are eligible to be estimated at 90% as per our directive. Interest income, which is based on cash values on hand and fluctuating interest rates, it is best that we take the conservative approach to record interest income. The revenue budget assumes full reimbursement from the state for the hotel motel room tax. That is currently being reviewed at the state level, so we may have to adjust that, and that will end up being, probably after the first year, we'll have a better idea of that situation. Indirect costs are representative of costs that are paid for in the general fund, but for the benefit of the enterprise funds accounts. For example, health insurance, property insurance, and services that a self-sufficient organization would need to pay. And now we're going to go to page four, which is the actual schedule. On the left-hand side of the gray section, you'll see tax recap form fiscal 2025, and it shows what our estimated tax levy was with our debt exclusions, et cetera, which had a tax levy of $86,485. The less unused levy capacity, which is the amount of money that we did not spend for 2025. And with that, the estimated revenue, cherry sheet revenue is $33 million. Cherry sheet assessments are $5,046, with the net state aid estimated at 21, I'm sorry, I'm looking at 25, 26, let me move over, sorry about that. Property tax increase, $85,1,822. Estimated new growth, $800,000. Excluded debt, $4,618,400, and $672,375, with an estimated tax levy of $91,092,597. Cherry sheet estimates, just the income only, is estimated at $34,079,550.26. The local receipts estimates are, the bottom line, local estimated receipts are $13,159,267.90. Our largest local receipts are for the auto excise tax at $4,633,432.78. Meals tax at $5,460,405.8. The room occupancy tax is at $378,761. Palanties and interest at $749,985.54. Payment in lieu of taxes, $109,427. Trash estimates, again, these are at 90% of actual collections of the prior fiscal, fiscal '24, $1,865,329.71. Ambulance, $2,132,701.01. Other departmental revenues are $4,440,640.6. License and permits, $1,054,840.72. The biggest portion of license and permits have to do with building permits, wiring, gas, plumbing. Fines and forfeits, $60,020.21. Medicaid recovery, that's the money that the school applies for, for services being provided to students, they apply to the federal government for reimbursement. We're estimating $334,664.55. Interest income, we're estimating $850,000. Page number six is free cash. For this budgeting process, we will have absolutely no free cash in our estimates. Overlay surplus is zero. Title V, receipts reserved, and that is exactly that. The town gives out loans, we get back money, which is program income, we are then allowed to spend it. Indirect costs for Cedar Hill, $71,859. Indirect costs, public health, $248,021. Indirect costs for sewer, $767,663. Indirect costs for water, $807,499. And so our total other financing sources would be the $1,0966,636. I would, so that gives us an estimated revenue available for appropriations of $140,029,051.16. Now, I just want to point out the indirect costs, et cetera, that are here. With the sewer, has gone up substantially from last year to fiscal '26, and that's because we did have another plant come online, increased insurances and things like that. So in conclusion, until we get to questions, the select board and the town manager provide proper guidance and direction for the 2026 budgeting process, which gives the community a road to success. There is no use of free cash or one-time revenue sources in FY '26 revenue projection. And I'm going to be quoting from the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, Best Practice 2020. "It is important to recognize that forecasting is more of an art than exact science. A simple, common sense approach may be just as useful and accurate as an intricate econometric mode." And thus per the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, best practice as published in 2020. Thank you for your time, and I will answer any questions that I may.
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
May I simply add a few points to the presentation prior to the members asking Biz questions? Again, I don't think she often enough takes credit for what she has done for the town of Stoughton. Just a few things, we're polishing the expense side of the budget for presentation to you at the next election meeting. But I can give you some insight that perhaps could change, but we don't anticipate it to change. In the 2026 operating budget, we actually have a net decrease of employees, not an increase, but a net decrease of employees. With the exception of V and A, which we all understand and accept, there will be no structural deficits in water, sewer, sewer, or municipal waste. We have public information sessions tomorrow night and the following night, where we will explain our numbers and our plan to the program. And although the water and sewer is subject to your vote, we will be recommending no increases in any of those categories. Because of significant cost reductions, those accounts are balanced. As Biz pointed out, there is no use of free cash. As you recall, there was a seven-year plan to reduce free cash in the operating budget, assuming the schools come in, as indicated, at 3.8%. We're below 3.8%, and there is no use of free cash in the operating budget. So the seven-year plan has been done under Biz's leadership in two years. Next point I'd like to make is there is no increase, I'm sorry, I've already said that, no increase in municipal waste, water, and sewer, subject to your vote, and, and that's all good news. This is that after 15 years in, in the legislature, Kingston Town Administrator, Stoughton Town Manager, I have never seen a budget this healthy. And I thank again Biz for teaching us the way the D O R recommends that you balance budgets. We're very secure right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back to Biz.
Thank you. I've got plenty I want to say, but I'm going to defer for a moment. I want to hear what the other members of the board have to say. Mr. Gito, if you're, have any comments or questions, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, I was going to go page by page, if that's okay.
Your turn, yeah. Sorry, would you just turn on, turn on your microphone? Thank you, sir.
On page four, you show the cherry sheet assessments and charges. And the charges for, is this the end of fiscal 2024? Is that, is it 2024 or 2025 that we are actual?
The first column is from the recap, which is now in process being filed with the Department of Revenue. So the cherry sheet charges for fiscal 2025, which was the final cherry sheets that came out from the state, we had an income of $33,086,942. And then we had an assessment or charges of $5,046,294. So our net state aid was $28,040,648. And in the 2026 section, you will see no assessments listed here, because those assessments are going to be $5 million times 3%, so it's 5.2 million roughly, that will be shown in the budget process, because I think it's important for the community members to know what are our assessments when we're doing the budgeting process. We're paying for pollution, yeah, pollution control, we're paying for MBTA, we're paying for health insurance, child teacher health insurance, things like that. So it's very, very important to lay them out, so you can actually see what we're spending and where we're spending it.
I guess the only reason I ask the question is it shows probably a $6 million difference between the actual last year and what we're expecting next year.
Correct, and that has to do with?
And so you, somewhere or another, you have to get back to reality, and I'm not sure where that occurs in the process, because I didn't see it here in any of the pages.
You will see that.
Biz, I think it's important, Mr. Gito, I think I understand his question. I think it's important, because I had the question when we did it. Your estimates are based on FY '24 actuals.
The 25 actuals for the cherry sheet.
I'm talking about our estimating revenue on?
Oh, estimated revenues are based on actual '24s.
Right.
Right. But back to the cherry sheet question, that's your question, where you don't see the charges and assessments listed there?
Well, yeah, I see that you have estimated it zero.
And that will show up on the budget side. So when we present the budget, that's when you will see the $5 million reduction.
The expense.
Okay.
On the expense side, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On page five, I see estimated receipts for trash, ambulance. I didn't see anything for water.
I'm, for water?
For water.
Water is an enterprise fund. This is for the general fund operating receipts, this is not for the enterprise funds. So it's a separate entity completely.
Okay. On page six, you have indirect costs for sewer, actual $530,000. And the next year, for next year, fiscal '26.
Right.
You've got $767,000, and that's about a 46% increase?
It is dramatic increase, and the reason that we have the increase is we did have another treatment plant go online. So again, more insurance costs and everything else, and how the schedule works, it increases the costs themselves. That went online, I think, during this fiscal year, maybe sometime in calendar '24 is when it came online. when it came online.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Gito.
Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions because I've gone through the numbers before, and I just wanted to thank you for such a great job. I'm so pleased that you are here. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Mr. McCrisky.
I'm all set.
Good. Mr. Carr.
I just have, it's not really a question to you, it's a comment, and I'll address it to the Town Manager. Tom, I don't know who our rep is at MWRA, but we got to address that population charge, that we're the only ones in the district on that, on that charge. Everybody else's flow and usage. And for some reason, when we got on MWRA, that happened, and nobody's addressing it. And I don't think it's fair that we're paying that way. Nobody else is.
You got it.
It's got to be some kind of amount we can take off.
I love being upstate.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. So I only have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you very much for, A, putting together this presentation, but also for helping to guide us through some choppy waters, and we are, in fact, in a really excellent place. I'll just use free cash as an example because it's one of the more, you know, significant deviations from the plan that we had. If I'm not mistaken, the free cash policy that we currently have, which of reducing it by $300,000 each year, has been in place for about seven years. I could be mistaken, maybe a little bit longer. But, you know, say eight, 10 years, right? Somewhere in that vicinity. And as of last year, we would have had $2 million available to us in free cash to use towards the budget. We ended up getting very close to getting to zero. We didn't quite make it, and I think the harm that we would have done trying to get the bragging rights to say we did it one year earlier than we currently are wasn't worth the painful calls either the municipal government or our school district. So I think it was the right choice. But we came very, very close. There's a lot of hard work to get very close, both on the municipal government, our financial department, as well as the school department. Everybody worked very hard to get as close as we could. Didn't quite make it, but this year, it looks like we are at least on track to do it. And that's about seven years ahead of schedule, which is remarkable. And it doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of extremely hard work, thoughtfulness and consideration for our options, creative, you know, problem solving and cooperation. It's just, this has not happened by accident. And I just want to thank you for, you know, being the tip of the spear on this, for being, for helping us develop thoughtful policies, and also for helping, you know, our government work through a budgeting process that has to deliver really a major objective in half the time that we originally expected. It's really remarkable. That alone, I find remarkable. But we are in, really financially in better shape than I've ever seen six, seven years ago. You know, I was hyperventilating through December and January, February, as we tried to figure out how we were going to make it all work. And those pressures just don't exist anymore because of the foresight and expertise that you bring to the problem. So thank you so much for all of your work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Select Board, thank you very much for your comments, and there's certainly a team approach, and I think we enjoy working as a team. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So the next item on our agenda is a public hearing. I think that the applicant is online. Kelly Francois. This is for an application for a new all alcohol beverage license for KPA Restaurant and Sports Grill Incorporated at 756 Washington Street, as has been our policy, at least for this current fiscal year. Our vice chair handles public hearings. He's done a remarkable job at it for us and has, you know, probably more than a decade of experience doing it with other boards and committees. So for the purpose of this public hearing, Vice Chair Scott Carrera is the acting chair. Thank you very much. There you go, sir.
Are the applicants online?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on December 3, 2024 at 8:00 p.m. to consider the application of KPA Restaurant and Sports and Grill, Inc., located at 756 Washington Street, Stoughton, Mass., 02072, for the application of all alcoholic beverage license. This hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Mass., and are virtually and via Google meets and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Livestream. Google meets, video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email gparreira@stoughtonmass.gov. Do I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting's open. I'm going to read into, before I give the applicant, I'm going to read in the department findings for this purpose. Fire Department has approved through Assistant Chief Jackson May Comba. The Police Department, Donna McNamara. We have a letter, and the letter read that the background check, everything passed, and they have no objection with the application. From the Board of Health, Sean Leahy, the assistant, has approved it, and there's no recommendations or any side comments. From zoning and building, Jack Erickson, he has approved it. And Teresa Cardozo from the Treasurer's Office, there's no objections. From Karen Brown at the Water Department, from the Public Works, it has been approved. The, our butter cards are in here, they've been done, and the opening of the hearing has been advertised properly, sir. Okay. To the applicant, can you just tell us a little bit about what you're doing and give your name loudly for the record, please, sir?
My name is Kelly Francois. That's K.E.L.L.Y. Francois, F.R.A.N.C.O.I.S. So what we're doing, we, a pretty new restaurant here at Stoughton. We've been here for about, let's say, since May, and we've been enjoying serving the community. And also our customers and, we really love what we do, the difference that we bring to the Caribbean or Haitian community, trying to, you know, bring the culture, diversity culture here to Stoughton. So this is the reason why we apply for the alcohol license, so that we can continue serving our, responsibly serving our community and provide them, you know, with, you know, like we have, in Haiti, we have cremas, which is an alcoholic beverage, you know. We like to, you know, be by the rules, and that's why we like to apply for this, we apply for this alcohol license so we can stay back rules, so we don't, so we can serve our culture and, you know, not just our culture, but we also welcome, you know, every client or every customer to come to our restaurant and enjoy a good meal, and also if they need a beverage, alcoholic beverage, to serve them responsibly as well.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Mr. Gito, anything? Go ahead.
I see that you have listed two different residences in your applications. One is for Lake Worth in Florida, and the other is 333rd Street in North Andover. Which one is it?
So my main location is in South Florida because I have...
Please speak up.
Yes, so my main location is in South Florida. I have three different restaurants, one in Dominican Republic, one in Florida, and now we have the one in Stoughton. So I go back and forth from Florida to North Andover.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry?
I said, "Thank you."
No problem.
My second question is that your sports bar is 1,100 square feet, and you have 20 seats. That's a lot different than any sports bar that I think I've ever been in. And it appears as though you have somewhere around $32,000 in rent, and you've put $90,000 into that place? I, is that correct?
Yeah, so when we, when we came into this place, there was previously a blessed experience at that location. We didn't want to, so when we studied the location, we noticed that people, restaurants was coming in and moving out. They didn't, they wouldn't stand for long in that location. Well, we didn't want to be the same. We wanted to be different. So we wanted to invest into the, into the place so that we can be different. And when somebody come in, if the place has changed, the atmosphere is different, the management is different. So we wanted, we just wanted to make a difference.
Thank you. It puzzles me how a person in Lake Worth, Florida, would choose the location you chose to invest your money. And I guess I'd like to know why, why Stoughton and why a space as small as that you've chosen.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. So in the Brockton area, I have family members there. So, in Canton, I have family members there as well. And I also have a cousin in Stoughton, right behind the restaurant. Where the chef that I had, my top chef in Dominican Republic, he received a parole to come to the United States last year. So he actually moved to, you know, to the Stoughton area. And while he was a great chef, because he was a great chef, and I'm like, you know what, as soon as he get his work permit, I'm going to open up a restaurant there and then continue the relationship. And that's how we ended up in Stoughton, is that he moved here, and then because of the work that he did in Dominican Republic, we decided to move forward with him with a restaurant. And what you, you said the place is small. It's small, but it's all about the location and, you know, the upgrade that we made and what we can do at that place. A small place, our vision is that one day it will give us a big place.
So this is a new license in the downtown?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Town Manager, do you have any sense of what the value of a license is?
No, sir, I really don't. I can certainly research it for you, but I don't know off the top of my head. In the downtown, though, it's a pretty important asset.
I think I'm done with questions.
Remember they got a bunch of licenses for the downtown? The economic development girl got, I think it was like six extra licenses.
Right.
So that must be like one of them.
But when you get a new license, it has value to it.
Oh.
And then you can sell that license. And I guess my question was, what is the sale price?
But it has to stay, the license can't be transferred. When they told us about them, they have to stay in the downtown. It can't, it could go across the street, but not to another side of town, like, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Just so that you know.
I am.
Deborah, would you like to go next?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question, and it's the summary version. I may mispronounce your last name, so beg my pardon with that. I'm saying that to the owner. But can you just tell us in layman's terms about your restaurant? Like, what time does it open? What time does it close? What, I know you said Caribbean, Haitian type of food, but what makes your restaurant so unique? And you're also asking for alcohol license. So you're selling mimosas? Like, tell us a little bit, so we can get all hyped up about this new restaurant.
Yeah, definitely. And I like to address the previous comment that I made. When I say grow, we're not saying to translate or license from Stoughton to another place. When I say grow, as you can see that we have three different restaurants. So meaning that we have one in Dominican Republic, one in Florida, now one in Stoughton. If we open one in another state, that doesn't mean that we're going to try to transfer that license over. We take, we take this license very seriously, and then we, we, we know it's a privilege for us to apply for this. So I just wanted to make sure I addressed that. And yes, ma'am, our restaurant, we open from 10:00 a.m. in the morning until 9:30, I'm doing, 9:30 or 10 o'clock during the weekday and 11 o'clock during the weekends. What makes us unique? Where in the Haitian community, the restaurants that there, that we have now, most of the menus that they put out there are not available. And this is where we came in. We like, you know, we're going to, we're going to practice the American way, where whatever we have in the menu, at any time you can ask for it, we will serve it. We will have it, and we will cook it to order. You order it, and we'll cook it. And we're very unique to the fact that not only that you can come in and get a seafood boil from us, you can also come in and get a hamburger, a cheeseburger. So we're not just Caribbean, we serve, we serve the entire community. Now, why would, what makes us different in terms of what we're serving? And in the Haitian community, we like to bring our cremas. Cremas is one of the, is one of the special drinks that we have in Haiti, and it's an alcoholic beverage. And now we cannot serve that without an, without a license. So our cremas, our chef make, we take pride to say our chef make the best cremas. It's like a creamy coconut type of drink, and it's good for the holidays and it's good for any occasion. And also, we also like to serve, you know, whatever it is that people like so that we can cater to, to the community. So... So, hey, this is what makes us... We like to think of us as a chain, but owned by one owner. We're not a franchise. I'm just a very motivated businessman who's also a professor at Kaplan University and who has a dream where having multiple businesses and will not also help me, also will help other people achieve their goals as far as giving them jobs and making their lives easier.
Thank you very much. That explanation was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cavey? Chairman, sir?
I have no questions. I know time's getting late. I just wanted to say I'm in favor of this license, Mr. Francois. I wish you the best of luck. If the board votes in favor, then thank you for choosing Stoughton as the place you want to do business.
Thank you so much.
Mr. McChrisky?
Just to concur, Mr. Cavey, all the background checks have been done. There's nothing there really. I mean, I have some concerns, but there's nothing to back those up. So, I'll be voting for it.
Okay. I'll go out to the public, and I'm sure Cynthia would like to go first.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. For years, the third most common language in Stoughton has been Haitian Creole. English, Portuguese, Haitian Creole. This is not a new community. Many arrived after the horrible earthquakes. I know some people may be thinking of the recent migrants, but Stoughton has had a significant Haitian population for a number of years, and the children are in our school system. So, this is not exotic to a good portion of our community. This will be home food. This will be familiar tastes. And granted, if you see me, I'll probably be the one eating the cheeseburger. But if someone is willing to put the money down on the table to try and make a better place in our community, I say, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Is there any other person in the audience who would like to speak? Anybody online? I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to close in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's the wish of the board, please?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. McChrisky, and I have a second from Ms. Roberts to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
No.
Congratu... Whoops.
No.
No. I have four to one. Still passes. And you're all set, Mr. Francois?
I appreciate you guys. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir. (Laughter). And I'll give it back to Mr. Cavey.
Again, thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
As always, I appreciate your contribution there. So, the next item on the agenda is the... Is our, I guess, for the most part, the last regular item, is the interest and process for calling a special town meeting regarding the South School project. As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, citizen comments, select board comments, and town manager comments show up after this. How I figure many people who are here would like to be heard on this issue, and I think it's appropriate to offer people the opportunity to be heard before we vote on it. So, in the spirit of that, we're going to move to citizen comments. Before we move into that, I do have... I'm just going to walk through how we're going to do this because I imagine there's a good number of people. First, I'm going to ask if there's anybody who has an unrelated comment they'd like to make, and we'll do those first. I'll go online. Who anybody... Because I tend to forget people who are online. I'll go there to see if there's any comments after that, and then we'll move down the aisles, and anybody who wants to be heard can be heard. I'd also like to just briefly read a statement that we try to remind people of. The rules regarding what's allowed during a citizen comment... Citizen comments has changed. The rules haven't, but the courts have weighed in, and it's a little bit different now than it has been in the past. And for that reason, I'd like to just read something that gives people an idea of what to expect. So, this is a revised recommendation after Barron versus Southborough. And this was written, assuming citizen comments was going to be the beginning of the meeting, so just ignore anything that is clearly out of place. Before we begin citizens' comments, I'd like to remind everyone of or state some ground rules for this agenda item, which I, as the chair, would like to just voice as a preface before we begin. Citizens' comments is an opportunity for the board to hear from the public, but shouldn't be a dialogue or debate. I therefore encourage the board members and the town manager to listen to the comments made and make note of those you want to follow up on and/or that warrant further discussion. If it's an item that needs further discussion, I'll put it on an agenda for a future meeting. If it requires follow-up, we can direct the town manager to do so. If the comments... Sorry. If the comment doesn't require board discussion at a future meeting or follow-up by the town manager, I would request that we simply try to say thank you and continue to the next speaker and then move on to the board's business. I'll try to give everyone all the time they need, but we do have a full agenda as always. Do as we always do. I'll ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. While public comments are required to pertain... Sorry. While public comments are not required to pertain to an agenda item, such comments must pertain to a matter that is within the public body's jurisdiction. Public comments on matters outside of the public body's jurisdiction shall not be permitted. The following comments shall likewise not be permitted: threats, incitements to imminent lawless conduct, obscenities, personal attacks, defamatory statements, and sexually explicit statements. I encourage speakers to present their remarks in a respectful manner and refrain from verbal attacks upon the character or motives of member of town boards or town staff, the citizens of this community, or each other. Thank you. Let's proceed with the first speaker. I remind you, you have three minutes. So, if there's a comment that is not related to the South School, would you mind just raising your hand? Ms. Walsh?
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. This pertains to a previous item on your agenda. If I understood correctly, there's a wish to make a new standing committee. That requires quite a process because it's a charter change, as one of the select board mentioned. First, town meeting has to vote in the affirmative. Then, the following year, in the annual election, all the people in Stoughton who are registered voters can vote on that question. So, it has to pass that too before it becomes part of the charter. So, it takes longer, and it's more complicated than people think. And I strongly recommend that the people that are presenting the bylaw, whether you present it or whether they present it as a citizen's position... Petition, excuse me. It's vital that town council be involved in the wording because if it is a petitioned article, not a single word in it can be changed at town meeting. It can't be amended. So, it's vital that it be perfectly worded so then it can go on the ballot the following year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, anybody else have comments that are not related to the South School? Mr. Intresco? If you'll say your name and your address, sir?
Peter Intresco, 587 Canton Street. Sorry, there's a button at the bottom. If you just press that. Oh, it is. Okay. Peter Intresco, 587 Canton Street. Town meeting representative, precinct eight. I would like to add a little bit to the DEI subject that we talked about later. I'd like to thank Mr. Carrara for having a big show to tell it like it is because this is a program that started 65, 70 years ago, and it's like beating a dead horse to death. Every big major corporation in the country is doing away with it because it's all this usefulness. Last week, the CEO of Walmart, that's probably one of the biggest corporations in the country, the highest minorities, and they're saying it don't work, and even the minority workers don't like the idea of doing it. They want to do away with it too. So, I don't know why we're bringing this up today, 70 years too late. And I'd just like to just to make sure you understand where I come from. Back in the '60s, I trained a lot of minorities as apprentice to be journeymen. That being said... All right. So, anyways, I'd like to add that, again, I want to thank Carrara for saying it like it is, and I think you guys took the coward way out of it to pass it on to town meeting when, if you did your job, you would have made the decision here, yes or no? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I think I saw one other person who said that they wanted to make a comment. Those are maybe, I guess, two more that are not related to... Is not related to the South School.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll get there.
Yes.
Ms. Rosenblatt?
Yes.
Say your name and address and your comments.
John Rosenblatt, precinct seven. I read an article and got some information about a previously unidentified chemical byproduct called chloron nitromide anion, and it has been found in a lot of tap water across the United States, according to a new study. And the chemical is produced when water is treated with chloramine, which is a disinfectant formed by mixing chlorine and ammonia. And it's potentially a very dangerous component to the water, and it has a lot of similarity to other toxic molecules. So, it's raising a lot of concerns among scientists, and I'd like to just point that out. And then in regard to the DEI, I want to thank Scott for mentioning his perspective because it's not just his perspective, it's a lot of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sir, again, ma'am.
I live at 115 Conal Drive in Stoughton. I want to thank you, Ms. Roberts, for bringing this forward. It's been really obvious to a lot of us in this town that we actually do have significant work to do in the DEI area because it's not just about race. It is about all the things that you listed and all the things that you spoke of, including one of the passions that's close to my heart, is the varying abilities of people in this community. And unfortunately, we have had lots of members of elected officials in this town targeting special needs members in the community. So, I'm very passionate about your project, and we're so grateful that you and the women that were sitting here tonight had the courage to bring it forward and represent, actually, like Dr. Baez was saying, the majority of the people in the town. So, thank you for your work.
Any other comments not related to the South School? So, I'm going to, based on the last one I saw, Mr... Sorry. This is for Chet. Don't you come up? Come on up. I'm sorry. I'm stumbling my words a little bit. Come on up. It's always good seeing you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. This is minor compared to all the other comments that are going to be coming. We've had a beautification in this town for a while, and I drive around a lot, as all you know, and I see a lot of stickers put on furniture, a lot of things. And I'm not sure if people really understand, or they got the message or whatever. But we are seeing a lot more trash, and when you talk about people that dump the trash and from out of town here, that's happening. But my biggest concern, the town is calling for beautification, but yet Freeman Street, the old Station One, has stuff on the side of the building, and I don't understand why that's not cleaned up. When, you know, we're asked... The town's asking us to clean and beautify the town, but yet the town's not taking care of their stuff. That is my concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Collins. And I think I saw Ms... Sorry. Yes, we have... Come on up, sir. Mr. Azavino? This is not about the South School?
This is on...
Okay. I'm going to just get other folks. If there's anybody who wants to cover some other material. Thank you so much. Anybody else who does not want to discuss the South School but some other item? Come on up. Ms. Lyons?
Lisa Lyons, precinct two. So, I want to just bring up this estimated revenues that we have. So, again, I don't understand why we're bringing forth policies for DEI, but yet we won't bring up policies that relate to the fiscal policies. I know at town meeting, it was mentioned that we had fiscal policies, but I don't see them posted anywhere, nor when I ask for FOIA requests to get them, have I seen any of them? So, this is a contradiction when you say transparency out of one side of your mouth, but then actually instituting by our actions to actually have the policies in place. Looking at page four of the schedule of estimated revenues, there's the new growth of there in there for $1,705. So, on one hand, we're saying there's not a use of free cash, but that money could go toward the school for the children, and that is coming on board, whether it be the South School or the middle school or the police, the capital projects, if you don't want to say schools. So, this board, time and time again, has said just tonight that everybody can ask their questions, but I'm telling you from a personal experience, when I ask questions of our departments here, there's anything but transparency. There's everything to hide information from the public, and there's a concerted effort to silence those of us whose job it is to ask of our town leaders for these basic information on the health of our town. So, you say we're very healthy, yet therefore we should not be having any debt exclusions. We should be able to be providing for some of our capital projects within the budget, and I don't see any of that here. And so, I would like this board to actually put actions behind the words that they keep speaking. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Just before you do.
I think it is important to respond.
Yeah. One second. Just for... Just in case there's some confusion, it's not... We're not debating. It's not a back and forth. But the use of new growth for a project would be referred to as an earmark, and that's illegal. So, there's a reason why that specific plan could not work and be actionable. But with regard to questions, Mr. Intresco, I think you already spoke on things not related to the South School. Okay. So, let's see. Is there anybody else who wants to speak on any item other than the South School? Okay. So, in that case, we're going to begin by asking people who are online if they'd like to speak. I've got two people on there, and I saw Ms. Peniman's hand has been up for a while. And so, Ms. Peniman, the floor is yours. You have three minutes. If you don't mind just saying your name and either precinct or address, I'd appreciate it.
Can you hear me?
We are able to hear you.
Okay. My headphones are tricky. I'm actually going to set a timer. Ellen Peniman. I'm on Walnut Court. My comments are with this South School. I'll try to be brief. I'm going by some notes. Regarding the attempt to have a town meeting, I'm a little confused as to why we're doing that. We voted on that as a community. The community spoke. So, my concern is sometimes trying to continue with this has the optics of appearing to be an end run or a bypass around the results of the election. That's my first concern. My second concern is some of the comments I've seen online about this, some of the motives some of the people who are supporting this may have. I don't mean members of the board. I'm talking about actual citizens. Economists are predicting that our economy is not going to be great in the near future. They are saying middle-class households could look at upwards of $4,000 a year in new expenses. And I struggled with finding out why would you want to increase your property values and increase your property tax? and increase your property taxes, as well as your homeowner insurance premiums, when the economy looks like it's going to be bad? And my concern is that there are some supporting this, who motives are not to improve education in Stoughton, but rather to enjoy a short-term gain in their property value, that they can turn around and then profit on by selling their home at a healthy profit, and then leaving the community with the tax bill. That's my other concern. I'm down to a minute 14. Another thing, a consistent comment I've heard online, is that there is the potential some students would have to use modular classrooms. I would only add that a luxurious building does not guarantee an educated and enlightened and refined student population. I've known enough Ivy League educated idiots to know that. And I've known brilliant, brilliant people who attended modest schools. So I think that concern is mistaken form for substance. I completely agree that there is a crisis with schools in this country, but it's not going to be fixed with buildings, it's going to be fixed with better education and more support for our teachers. And finally, I'm going to conclude saying, I don't mind taxes. I think government programs and a government support of its public is a wonderful, wonderful thing. But there needs to be some concern, which I haven't seen, about, one, the fact we need to be responsible with our money. Taxpayers here are already supporting a lot of other things, and a lot of new services, and a lot of mismanaged services. And, you know, there seems to be a callousness towards the fact that, on top of all of this, this will create hardship for many families in this community. And I'm just concerned that's not being considered. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time and allowing me to comment.
Thank you.
Let me turn the mic on, that might help. So I'll start again. Yeah, I haven't shown, as for showing of hands, I imagine we have a lot of people who want to speak. What I will say is that I'm going to have to be a little bit hard on the three-minute limit. I want to make sure that people have the chance to speak, and also that we're able to get out of here before the break of dawn. So we do have one more online speaker, and then we'll move right down the line. We have Ms. Reins, I believe, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Marino Reins.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. My first subject will be DEI. I've listened to all the speakers, and I wanted to say I'm very disappointed, and I think it's a waste of time. There is no, none of the presenters had any items of actions. All it is, is just talking and keep talking, and it's nothing but empty demagogue. So I know that the state and a lot of towns, a lot of businesses getting rid of, got rid of, and in the process of getting rid of DEI. On behalf of my neighborhood, people who are against DEI and believe it's a complete nonsense, it's a waste of our time and resources. This community, the DEI, is spreads, I believe, it's only spreads more hate among us, it divides us, it is, I believe, discriminatory and racial by its nature. So I'm against it. My other subject is about policies and procedures in town that are so missing, and Stoughton needs to be devoting their time to policies and processes to make sure that everything is going honestly and fair, and we don't have any, we don't have any corruption going forward. And I'm talking about the process of two caucus, the caucus meetings and votings. Just recently, our, I'm from Precinct 7, we had a caucus of, on October 10th, and I can tell you, it was no process whatsoever, it was a complete mess, and on top of it, I've asked for the town report, which I never received, and all I heard is, we don't have a formal process for the caucus meeting. It only adds to the bucket of how much Stoughton needs processes and policies in order to make sure that everything goes smoothly, and there is trust and transparency in this town. Thank you very much.
Thanks. So I don't believe they have a line with a handrail, so we're going to go forward, see the people just in the hall. I don't know if we wrote down, row by row, so.
Thanks. I should just leave this mic on. But the, okay, so we're going to, we'll do this again. So we're going to, everybody online has commented, we're going to move down each row. Up, from my perspective, I'll do row one, left side, row one, right side, row two, left, right, and so forth. And anybody who would like to speak, you'll have that opportunity. Since we're discussing the South School, I don't believe Ms. Walsh had comments on this, so we'll go to the, to my right, Mr. Anzavino.
John Anzavino, 25 Ross Avenue, Precinct 4, Town Meeting Rep., and I am the chairman of the Elementary School Building Independent Working Group. I appreciate the board taking the time to use the process that's available to them, if they would choose to move forward with this project once again. I would ask you to find out if, A, you can change the way that was presented last May, and how it was presented in November as total over, total debt exclusion from the Prop 2 and 1/2. And if you would consider, if it's possible to do it, if you would consider putting it partly in the debt service and partly on a debt exclusion, similar to what you did with the fire station. So that's all I had to say with that. I just, I appreciate you taking it on, and whatever your decision is, it will be. I thank you for at least considering it and using the process that's available to you, if you so choose to put it forth again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for, thank you, John. And so now we're going to go to row two, my left, so we have Mr. Lurie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, David Lurie, 18 Robinette Road. So there's a little bit of concern that I have around what happened after June 11th, when the first vote happened on the South School. The first meetings that happened on the school committee, we heard the superintendent say, before we get started on this, there was a hard no. It wasn't just a no, it was a hard no, close to 600 votes. What happened, there's a little bit of a timeline that I just want to bring up, everybody up to speed on. If you go back several years, if you go back to 2020, there was a giant public safety building coming through, it was going to be about $60 million, very expensive, very contentious discussion around it. It ended up culminating in the entire project, where the building committee got dissolved, and they came back with a product that was half the cost, and the firemen are pleased, from what I can tell. Yeah, there were problems with the location, and everybody had, you know, debate over, gee, was it a great project or not, but they're very happy with their, it's ADA compliant, it's a fine building. It had half the cost that it was heading in the direction of. I'm basically pleading with you to do the same thing, dissolve the school building committee, and come back with a project that the town could actually get behind, and with a product that I'm sure the students would enjoy, just as much as the firemen enjoy the fire station they're in.
Some of the women like it, too.
Okay, good. The firemen and the firewomen. Thank you. Thank you, thank you for the correction. I'd like a few seconds of my time back, but that's okay. The point is, is that back in 2020, in January, after months, and by the way, there was moments where Deborah Roberts, she spent so many, I'm telling you, she deserves a gold star. She spent so many, you know, weekend hours in the library with me, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't wish that on many people, but she's, she's a trooper, she is a hard worker, like you said, because she put in the hard work to develop what should be the right kind of policies for the town, so that we could take on all the pipeline of obviously crazy amounts of projects that the town can't afford. How do we get through that? And she was willing to take that on, and we worked, we worked hard, and we came up with policy ideas. There was actually consensus, there were, I know that Scott Carrera was on the Finance Committee at the time. We came together and we all agreed, from the chair all the way down to, it was full consensus that we did need policies, and there was actually a presentation done on January 30th, because I did watch the video, it was interesting to watch, we were kind of newbies at the time, so, you know, a little work to do there. But it ended up where Deborah became a select board member, and the first thing she did was, is she convinced Christine Howe that we needed to take this the next step, which was, if you, if I could just have a little moment of your time, is that she convinced Christine Howe, I understand, I understand, but Christine Howe took on taking the next step with the DLS Technical Services, and on Jan, on August 27th of 2020.
Sorry, sir, your time, your time is up.
I understand, but the presentation demonstrated that everybody on the select board at that time.
Three-minute recess.
All right.
Welcome back. It's 9:32, and we will take the next speaker. Is there anybody else on the left side, my left here, who would like to speak? Ms. Lyons. If you're raising your hand, then yeah, you're welcome to speak.
Hi. Okay. So again, just to finish, he was talking, Mr. Lurie was talking about that August 20th video, which I'll post up on the News of Stoughton Facebook page, so that we can get this policies out there, that was actually in front of the select board. And then, I believe it was Mr. McCrisky came on the board and replaced her position, and we have yet to get policies in place. So we really do need those policies. And I just wanted to say, not to repeat myself, that while we already know the town meeting passed it to get on the June 11th vote, they passed it again, but the voters spoke. Again, the voters, you need to respect the voters. They told you they want to give these children a new school, and all the mama bears and all the daddy bears, a new school. You have an obligation as a select board to send the project back. You can either do it within the budget, or, as the chair of the working group just suggested, or you can put it back to get MSBA money. It'll be a longer process that way, but that's what happens when bad decisions are made. You represent the taxpayers of this town, you need to, your actions need to support supporting the taxpayers of this town, and I respectfully ask you to do that. The vote matters. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other speakers from that same row?
Arnie Feinberg, 250 Powell Street. I'm going to try and keep this as short as possible. I'd like to encourage you to stop wasting time, start planning and building a square-based school, so we can fund it using funds from the new buildings coming into Stoughton, we can do it now, or we can wait for the MSBA money. That's all I need to say.
Thank you so much, sir. Okay, I'll move over to the right side, I think we're good over there, so Ms. Campbell.
Hello, no, it is, thank you. Hi, I'm Carolyn Campbell at 64 Chisholm Road, and I am here to urge all of you to do the responsible thing for all of the citizens of Stoughton, including all of the taxpayers, of which I am also one, and put this back on the, you know, open up a special town meeting, put it through the special town meeting, and put back on the ballot, because despite the vote, I understand people feel like, well, the voters spoke. Well, there's no law about revoting or re-asking something that was voted down. If there was a rule against that, our current president and our president-elect, neither one of them would be in office, because both of them had previously run for those positions and lost. So if they're able to do it, we are able to do it. Because while the, while the project was defeated by the voters, it still hasn't, we still have a problem. We have a, one school building that is basically probably one lawsuit away from being shut down. I personally, and this is not the opinion of any committee I'm associated with, whether it's the Finance Committee or the Elementary School Working Group, think that if this project fails, and the MSBA, it doesn't happen, that the state's going to start looking to close that school building. Because while we may not have to have a fancy building, we do need to have one where the ceilings aren't falling, that is ADA compliant, and that, you know, people are, you know, children are safe, and it's hard to learn when the ceiling falls on your head. That's what my daughter had that experience at the old high school. And it, you know. So what are the options that we have? Where there's been discussion that we should just send this project back, and come up with a new plan, or just build a square school. All right? The people that have put this forth, that say we could do this, and do it like around $30 million, do it within the budget, have absolutely, as far as I know, no engineering or construction or any sort of experience whatsoever to make those discussions, you know, those predictions. Furthermore, the South School building project has not been, is not something new. This has been being discussed for over 20 years. The building committee itself, that's been affected, has been in effect for about four years, and has put forth, had plenty of opportunities to take testimony, and those, as far as I know, neither one of, none of those proponents have, excuse, none of those individuals have made, made those suggestions at that time. Finally, revoting this, putting it back on the ballot, and working to get it passed, is the fiscally responsible thing to do for our town. If we put this debt into the budget, as some people have suggested, we are going, is that my time?
Yes.
All right. I would just ask then, do the responsible thing and put it back on the ballot, because that's the fiscally responsible thing to do, and I can explain later. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm at a point where unfortunately my eyes are no longer able to necessarily see who's in the rows, so I apologize, but there's, we're going to go third row, my left side. Come join us.
John Rosenblatt, Precinct 7.
Johnny, have to speak a little longer.
Okay, is this better?
Much better.
Okay. Basically, all I want to say is, we need to honor the will of the people. The people have spoken, the vote was taken, and that should be that. And there's a lot of talk from an official saying that there's too much division in the town. Well, yeah, because we voted and you're just ignoring us. It is, it's not a best two out of three, and we basically have to accept, sometimes we don't like, there's a lot of votes that are taken that I don't like the way they turn out, but you got to just man up and deal with it, and that's not happening, and it's really pretty disgusting to watch this, to see, to watch the vote be ignored. There was, and it was a larger vote than normal, too. And I'm just going to say it again, honor the will of the people, that's what we want. And there's a lot of talk that you don't hear if you're only living in a bubble, and you're only hearing what your own people are saying. There's a lot of people that are very disgusted, they can't afford it, and they don't want it. They want you to stick to the budget, so honor the will of the people, please. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Peter Ventresko, 587 Canton Street. I would like to get into the TIF money. I would like to get into the TIF money. I'm going to go back a few years, and we hooked into the MWA water main in Westwood, and we spent millions to get it through Westwood, through Canton, and to Stoughton. And it wasn't done by an override, it was done by TIF money. So, it didn't cost the taxpayers any money. Okay. The same thing should be doing with this school, with this big, what do they call that project up there, logistic park? So, there's some kind of bad planning there. If they didn't incorporate TIF money from that park designated as supposed to be four-plus million, and that's basically what I heard at town meeting, it's $4 million a year to pay for the loan and the interest. So, that could have saved the taxpayers an override if they did that. Okay, they didn't do it, bad planning. But if I remember right, this board might have the authority to override that, what Tom Meeting did, and take that money and put it towards to pay for the school, so we don't have an override. Everybody's fighting back and forth, splitting the town in half. All right, that being said, one more item. At the town meeting, there's a basic school plans that the MSBA has, but for some reason the school, the Building Committee didn't like them, so they had to go for the more expensive. The basics plans, the only thing is, the outsides is just a plain building, rectangle, but inside, the quality's going to be the same. So, you spend the money on the inside and get the same quality of education, but you're saving the big money on the outside walls. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keeping it moving. Roberta Habbat, Precinct 7. So, my concern, more or less, is I feel that there's a conflict of interest here. Three selectmen, Mr. Cavey, Ms. Roberts, and Mr. Gito, all attended town meetings. None of yous, I shouldn't have had that, none of yous disclosed that you were going to vote on the article. That would land back in your lap. And you all voted yes, because I see the results, and Mr. Gito also signed the petition. It's just an appearance of impropriety. I think it's impartial, and I think your actions are going to be tainted with bias if you vote for this. You clearly have demonstrated that you want this project done, and you clearly are saying you want it to come back to me and vote for it. I just don't think it passes the sniff test. There's nothing that I can do about it, there's nothing I will do about it, but I just think that it's just really not ethical. The last thing I want to say is, town meeting requested this to come back. The town meeting members did not vote for their, what their constituents voted, because if they really did, they would have all voted no, except for Precinct 3, because Precinct 3 is the only precinct that the school wanted. So, take it as you will. I think we could do this project if we all work together, try to make something more affordable. Nobody on the no committee has all the answers. We're not architects, nobody's been invited to the table, but I think it could be done if we all put our heads together. We have a middle school, $200 million. We're going to need a debt exclusion for it. Why taint that? Let's try to do this school. It's going to stink, because the school and, going to put pressure on them to save out some money. But I really think we should really try to work together, put it in the budget, and just let this die here, and let's start working on it right away. Let's not wait till April Fool's Day, people. Because if it doesn't pass, which I have a feeling it won't pass again, you're going to be, we're ahead six months if we just let it die tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, so now we're onto the fourth row. I'm going to start with the fourth row on my left, because there's nobody in the fourth row on the right, on my right. So, is there anybody on that, in that fourth row who would like to speak? Ma'am?
Yeah, when it's green, you're good. Hello. My name's Joanne O'Reilly, Precinct 2. I have spoken to a number of my, of taxpayer residents in Precinct 2, and got various responses. The majority do not want more tax increases. I don't think we got the increase in taxes yet for the fire department, so that's still coming. I believe we didn't. I have not heard this idea before, and this is a crazy, out-of-the-box idea, but why don't we rebuild the South School and make it into two floors? That's just another idea that I haven't heard at all. So, and I guess one of the things, important things, it would be hooked up to plumbing already, so that's a major expenses, the plumbing would be there. So, that's just an idea that I thought of. And just another added thought, I was surprised to hear that Town Council at the town meeting said that after 90 days, that no vote was void. And I was surprised, if it was a yes, would it still be void? I guess that's my question, after 90 days, is the yes vote still void? So, that was like something that I thought about. But thanks so much for listening to me.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else in the fourth row on my left, so we'll move over to the fourth row on the right. Come join us, yeah. Just before you start speaking, let's get a mic in front of you. Yep. Mike, you have to get kind of close to it, so you're able to hear.
Is this good? Is this good?
Yes, perfect. Perfect, thank you. There you go.
Hi, I'm Lila. I'm at 32 Greenwood Ave. I'm at OMS. I'm in sixth grade, and I'm a member of Student Council. I think if the town doesn't, or well, no, if the town and the people don't pay for new school, then we'll have to make room for all the South School students that have to learn while their school is being rebuilt. And that might mean that the Hanson School, which my friends and brother go to, would have to get, would have to replace their blacktop with classrooms, and we have recess, and they have recess on the blacktop. So, that's why I think we should put the question back on the ballot and try to, I think it was not rebuild the South School, but make something else, build a new one.
Thank you very much. So, is there anybody else in that fourth row who would like to speak?
Hi. My name is Noah Beta-Haron. I'm Lila's dad. We live at 32 Greenwood Ave. I just want to address again this concern that I keep hearing from the no side, that scheduling a revote would be undemocratic and ignoring the will of the voters. I just want to be clear, if the vote were being ignored, we wouldn't be here right now, because the school project would have been approved and moving forward. So, the reason that this is still up for discussion is that the vote has not, in fact, been ignored. We are simply asking that the people be given another chance to vote on it again, as happens quite frequently in this country. We do, last time I checked, live in a country that just elected the same president, it booted out of office four years ago, the last time the question came up for a vote. So, the idea that voting is some kind of one-time thing, and voters can never reevaluate their decisions, is ludicrous and frankly un-American. Giving voters another chance to consider the same topic isn't undemocratic, it's the most normal and democratic option on the table. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, is there anybody else on my left fourth row? Come join us, Ms. Lazarus.
Hi, my name is Rachel Lazarus. Is this on? No? Yes? Yes. My name is Rachel Lazarus. I live at 25 Jordan Drive. I am not Lila's mom, but I wish, I am sure her mom is very proud of her. I wanted to take a moment before I jump into my very long-winded speech, thanking you all for being on the Select Board, thanking you for actually doing the hard work that is necessary to keep this town together. It is really hard to hear people mischaracterize your work, mischaracterize the actions that you've taken, and it is because you are doing this thankless job that Stoughton is improving in so many ways. Thank you so much. I hope the people here are inspired to run for local office. I am, so, and I am going to. There has been a lot of discussion about the cost of the new elementary school, but little about the opportunity costs, the costs we will incur if you do not put the elementary school on the ballot in April. For town meeting, I made a visualization of the findings that the Executive Working Group found, both the minimum and the maximum cost it would be. It is so much more expensive to do any of the alternatives than it would be to do this with this grant. I was also very inspired by Ms. Lyons's bar charts. They were a great way to visualize the info, but I also added in the opportunity costs in red, and you can see that Stoughton's cost, the opportunity cost, is so much higher than those other towns, which again got a different form of MSBA funding, because they, those towns have a much higher poverty rate than we do. I have been talking to the people who voted no last year. I have been listening to what they said, and I've taken it seriously. Some honestly thought that this was a vote for no new taxes, and it wasn't about the school. And when they realized that voting no means a more expensive project, those people often changed their mind. Some people thought that the Building Committee and the Executive Working Group are lying about the costs or planning on pocketing some money, and I've heard some other insinuations about that tonight. That is an insult to our neighbors, to the people who work here, and the people who have shown true public service the last several years. The people spinning conspiracy yarns have never showed up the way the Working Group or the Building Committee have, even when asked. I have, I respectfully request anyone who thinks there's a magic cheaper way to create their own building plan and present it, and although I've been asking this, no one has provided one, even with wants to think so. I don't know why. There are many people on fixed incomes who are afraid that the increase in property tax will be too much, and I take that seriously. And for the last six months, I've been helping seniors in Stoughton apply for the Massachusetts Senior Circuit Breaker Tax Credit, which would give a tax waiver to eligible seniors that would be somewhere between six to nine times the property tax increase of this new school. I was very happy to see the town manager included this in the list of programs that he posted on his Facebook page. Please check it out. We do not have to pit our seniors against our children. No one has to suffer for the town to be fiscally responsible. That is a ridiculous false claim.
Sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now, as I mentioned, my eyes weren't good at row four, now it's a blur. So, I think we've got row five on my left. Is there anybody in that row? No? Row, row six on, sorry, row five on the right.
Sorry, I'm not going to be looking at you, I'm going to be reading from my paper. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you, and I want to express my gratitude for your service to our, oh, Elena Canis, 257 Third Street, Precinct 2. I want to express my gratitude for your, to your service to our town. Your dedication and the time you commit to this community are deeply appreciated. I also want to thank you for including the Elementary School Building Project on the agenda. This project is a crucial investment in our town's future and reflects your commitment to meeting the needs of our students, educators, and families. The current school building plan is a result of years of work and a thorough feasibility study. The study carefully evaluated all options and determined that the current proposal is the most practical and effective solution to address our school facility challenges. While I respect differing opinions, it's important to note that opposition to this plan emerged as an afterthought. Many of the alternative suggestions, though well-meaning, have not been rigorously examined or proven feasible. We need to move forward with the plan that has been thoroughly vetted and offers significant funding support from the state. This proposal represents the best path, sorry, the best path forward, and your support ensures we are making a thoughtful, responsible decision for the future of our town. With your support for a revote, we can bring this vision to life and create a lasting impact for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anybody else from row, I think it's six now? Please join us.
Good evening, Select Board. My name is Antonio DiMayo. I am at 129 Chapman Road, Precinct 3. Thank you for listening to us. I'm here tonight advocating for a revote, not only as a citizen of Stoughton, a taxpayer, and a mom of three young boys, but also as a special education parent. Our family is, yes, districted to South School, but my oldest son, diagnosed with combined ADHD and on the spectrum, now attends school in a sub-separate program at the Anson Elementary School. I could spend the night speaking about the countless ways a school building itself can either simplify or tremendously complicate the life of a kid with special needs, but there is no time for that. Nevertheless, I invite you to watch the 45-minute-long video that shows the tour of the South School and what the actual situation there is. Even more importantly, please speak to the special education parents and ask them, ask these parents to tell you about their kids' experience, the struggle, the logistic nightmares, and the trauma. Each one of us would be able to come up with at minimum 10 action items that could be tackled by having access to this consolidated state-of-the-art school and the monetary resources that you could unlock in savings. The saved funds could be reinvested in making sure that this district finally met higher education, higher standards, and providing special education services within an authentically restrictive environment. We are not asking to build a fancy school that meets the needs of a minority. We are asking to deliver a project that could lead to a redesign, an efficient school district, a district that could address the basic needs of all its students. Wherever special education services can be efficiently provided, all the students endure the consequences, and the district carry the economic burden of irresponsible, wasteful, and discriminatory choices. Thank you.
So, is there anybody else from that, from that row who would like an opportunity to speak? Okay, so we'll move on to the next row, I think which is row six on the left, my left. Thanks for joining us. Good seeing you.
Thank you. My name is Ian Turlin.
You had it right.
So, thank you for the time. My name's Ian Turlin, 47 Seaver Street, Precinct 2, and also a member of the Finance Committee. I think I just want to reiterate some of the points that were made today. So, like, likewise, I've spoken to some of my neighbors, and I do think there was some confusion about what exactly was voting for. I think there were some people who voted no, who expressed concern of, oh, I thought I was just raising taxes, or I thought maybe it was a vanity project, and they didn't fully appreciate the scenario or the alternative that was being presented. So, I think that also was bared out in the town meeting vote, where in April, the, you know, it passed, but kind of by the skin of the teeth, just a couple votes different would not have met that two-thirds threshold. The most recent vote was overwhelmingly in favor, when I think people realized what the situation was. And then, you know, ultimately, when I saw the numbers originally, I was thinking, this is a lot of money for a school. But when you look at the facts, that we've spent over $1 million in experts and engineers, architects, and they've said this is your best option forward. When you look at, we're getting $47 million from the state. When you look at, if we turn it down, it's probably a good five years before any alternative school would be presented, with absolutely no guarantee that that new school would come in any cheaper. When you look at trying to do modular classrooms and having to pay for it with, you know, tax cuts, because the thing is, people say, can we put in the budget? Well, we're paying for it one way or another. So, either you pay an extra $300 a year as a debt exclusion, or you probably lose the equivalent in services. There was talk about, you know, the COA, or fire and safety, other services being cut. So, I think one way or another, it's going to get paid for. And what I just say is, I do think that this is the cheapest option, and I hope that you reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else from row six? Dr. Bayden, it's always great seeing you. Dr. Bayetta, it's always great seeing you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Joe Bayetta, 239 Shumong Street, resident of Stoughton, and I am here to speak as only a resident. First of all, I want to thank the five of you. I voted for all five of you at some point or another, probably one of the only people who can say that. I've actually voted for people who sometimes don't vote the same way, and I would do it again. But I want to put on the table something that was said earlier that bothered me because I had no intentions of speaking. It was a comment about conflict of interest. There is no conflict of interest with the Select Board in how you decide to vote, yea or nay. However, if you would like to speak to me about conflicts of interest of elected officials running no votes, sitting on those committees, that would be a discussion of conflict of interest under this Massachusetts general laws. You're not under any conflict of interest regardless if you voted at town meeting. Come on, folks, we all know what happens at town meeting. I collect a check from this town, I'm not a town meeting member, I'm just a resident. We all know what happens at town meeting every single year. People vote on their own budgets. Happens every year. Nothing wrong with that. Nobody's ever said there's anything wrong with that. Personally, for me, there is. But I've never gone after somebody because you took your individual opportunity as a taxpayer, elected by your precinct, to decide to take the vote the way you did. I think they call that democracy, not conflict of interest. That said, I think it's also important that from this guy, this taxpayer, I'm not going to threaten a single one of you on how you decide to vote, because you're my friends. I helped to elect you, and if you vote the opposite way, I'm not going to be the guy that's going to vote up or down because of one vote. I vote on what I think is the right people, and I will have coffee with every single one of you and try my hardest to get you to think that this is the right decision for the South School as a taxpayer. As your superintendent, we don't always agree. You guys know that. That's another game that we all play. Let's talk the truth. But at the end of the day, I care too much about this community to not believe that this isn't the democratic principles of what we do on any issue, any topic. We do it all the time. Literally, it takes a petition, it takes a petition with no questions from the Select Board, to go to town meeting, then back to you if it passes there, and then to the taxpayers. That's the process the town of Stoughton has endorsed since its foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. So still row six, my left side, this side. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Seeing them, we'll move over to the right side. You name an address first.
Hello.
Sorry, you just turned it off. I think you just have to press the button once, have the green light, and then you're good to go.
Hello, my name is Alicia Rinaldi. I'm in Precinct Four. I'm speaking today to ask you to move forward with the new elementary school project, process. I'm asking you to do this as a taxpayer, as an involved individual in this town, as a parent, a parent of children that would never benefit directly from this new school building, but I believe that this would benefit our whole community to move forward with this project. I believe that there's a swell of support for this project, as evidenced by our votes at the town meeting. The most recent town meeting, the margin of the passage rate exceeded that of the previous vote. I believe that for three key reasons, it makes sense to move forward with this project. I think since the most recent vote, circumstances have changed. During that vote, it was not clear what the alternatives were to not, to turning down the vote on this project. At this point, we know that the circumstances that would happen in this town if the school does not move forward are not good. It does not look good for our town. We would have modular classrooms, our students would suffer, our schools would suffer, our property values would suffer. I think the experiences of our students would suffer, our teachers would likely also not find this to be a great working environment, and I worry about our ability to retain staff. Turning down $46, $47 million of a grant does not make any sense to me. I do not see any way that we could build a project like this that would benefit all of our students by working within our town budget without borrowing. I know that that discussion has been brought up several times, however, it does not seem like there's any feasible way for that actually to happen without our town services seriously suffering. An issue that was brought up at our recent town meeting, when we learned about the consequences that we would likely face to staffing levels, to the council of aging, to our schools, to our, our public safety departments, I think that those repercussions are now known, and I think that a lot of taxpayers, a lot of voters, now understanding what a no vote would actually mean, would turn to yes voters. So I believe for that reason, we need to move forward. I also believe that because of the short window of time between the authorization for the vote and the vote, there was a lot of misinformation about what the actual vote would mean. I think there was a focus on the taxes would rise if we move forward with this. At any rate, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I recommend that the people who are speaking, who will speak, if you have that material in a form, that you can send it to the Board of Selectmen, that you do so. Your information is helpful on both sides.
Thank you.
But we can't, we can't get all of the value of this discussion by just listening to that and having it go into the ether. A lot of what you're saying should be put into a form that people can read and respeak. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gino. So we're still on row six. By all means, come join us. I told you my eyes were bad. I didn't see you back there. It's great seeing you. Really great seeing you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Everybody hear me? Okay. Linda McNally Cohen, 72 Basick Circle, Precinct One. I'm speaking tonight, I was asked to speak tonight because I am definitely, as a taxpayer, I do not have children in the Stoughton schools anymore, I did, and as a retiree, I am totally in favor of building a new school for many reasons. First and foremost, I was educated in Stoughton, and, believe me, I will not get into age, but I attended the South School. I had the pleasure and was fortunate enough last year to teach at the South School as the library assistant. And I can assure you that the condition of that school is the same as it was when I attended many, many moons ago. The library itself had to be cut in half so we could accommodate specialist teachers because of the overcrowding. We had to take closets, they became classrooms. When the teachers and the staff would try to have lunch, go on a break, our area for our quote "teachers lounge," we would have to walk under PVC piping, wires out of the ceiling, and completely have a very small space to eat. It was not safe. There are kindergarten classrooms in that school that have no tiles in the floor. There is rain coming in from the roof and the gutters. This is always, no matter whether you're for a school or not for the school, this has to be made about our children, the children in this town. We cannot do them a disservice. A school, a new school will bring new families here, it will increase the property values, it will benefit our local businesses, it will help our economy. These modular buildings, portable classrooms, to me, are only a Band-Aid fix. They will not provide security that is so necessary for the kids and for the teachers and our staff. There's going to be additional costs. You have to repair them, you have to maintain them, you have to clean them. This is something that above and beyond has to be taken into consideration.
I'm sorry, but it's great seeing you. Thank you very much. So we're still on row six in the back. Come join us. Yeah, just move a little closer.
Hi.
Yep.
My name is Michaela Stanlin, Precinct Three. I strongly urge the-
Sorry, I'm sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you. Just pull that a little closer to you. There you go. I'll start you over again.
Okay. My name's Michaela Stanlin, Precinct Three. I strongly urge the Select Board to place a revote on the elementary school project. Holding a revote on the new school with state funding is critical to Stoughton's growth. It is crucial for our home values, which will plummet if an elementary school closes with nothing in the pipeline. It is crucial for our children, who deserve to be in schools that are fit for modern education standards and designed with safety in mind. It is crucial for our town to demonstrate Stoughton values, education, and safety. I hear a lot about the square-building school concept. Please note that curved hallways in schools ensure safety by limiting long lines of sight, reducing the scary but very real risk of school shootings in this country. I want that to be kept in mind. If any Select Board members are unsure about a revote, I urge you to reconsider. There are no feasible options here at this moment, aside from one, building a new school with the funding, or two, adding $30 million temporary modular classrooms to the other elementary schools, and a new school would cost solely on Stoughton taxpayers. The South School is in severe disrepair. I would know. My six-year-old told me that it rained in the building during the last rainstorm and asked if that's normal to happen in schools. Despite how vocal opposition has been on social media and otherwise, let me be clear, the vote no promoters have not provided any written plans, timelines, legitimate studies, or estimates for their imaginary alternative. Those opposed to this new school using state funding have not provided any concrete solutions that would actually save money for Stoughton taxpayers. It truly is what one would call concepts of a plan. There is a lot of talk, absolutely no action, and I stress that the Select Board see the true, true options going forward, and that using the MSBA grant to build the new school is the fiscally responsible option. Over the summer and fall, I've spoken with many Stoughton taxpayers while collecting signatures for a revote. Many were unaware of the implications that a no vote would have on our town. Others simply did not vote because they were unaware of the special election. I truly believe that the second shot on the ballot is the one that we need to succeed. Please place the revote on the ballot. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else in the sixth row? I think we're done there. So we'll go to the seventh row. Come join us.
I'm Catherine Weiss. I am a resident at 68 Jordan Drive, a Precinct Four town meeting rep, school committee chair, member of the school building committee, and a parent to elementary school children in the Stoughton Public Schools. Thank you for your time tonight in considering this project. One point I want to add to this discussion is that while this project does have a large upfront cost, it will decrease costs over the long term. Asking the district to replace just the South School means that the district will have to renovate or replace five separate elementary schools over the coming decades at an increased cost. Closing the consolidated elementary school proposed and approved by the MSBA allows the school department to decrease its buildings from eight to six. This closes two of the most expensive buildings to heat per square foot and two of our more expensive buildings to operate. This consolidated project means we won't have to renovate or replace the Jones Preschool. That school, because it is preschool, and administrative offices, will cost millions to renovate. It's almost 100 years old, and it is not MSBA-eligible. That will be entirely town-funded if we have to replace that building. This consolidated elementary school is the best long-term option for Stoughton's finances and the district's operational costs long-term. It will allow the district to pivot from focusing on major capital projects in the elementary and preschools to the much-needed OMS project once the Stoughton High School debt is fully paid. This elementary school also, for so many educational benefits, it'll be a school designed to 21st century laws, codes, and best practices, and this consolidated school will benefit the most elementary schools and raise the quality of elementary education across the entire district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Ann Fisk, 20 Bisbe Road. I'm here tonight to further advocate for town, for moving forward with a special town meeting and a town vote for the new elementary school building project. I currently teach at all five elementary schools and OMS, and I have for 13 years, but again, I'm not speaking as a town or school employee, but as a town meeting rep, a homeowner, and a parent of two very young children. We've discussed the deficiencies of this current South School and the fact that Stoughton will be redistricting all our elementary schools due to overcrowding. We've discussed what a positive project this new building would be for our town. We've adequately pulled at your heartstrings. So now, from my perspective, what Stoughton's town government must do is properly advocate for this project. The town's government and the school department are not two opposing forces. They are not in combat with one another. Your responsibility to the town is fiscal, yes, but because of that, it would be a dereliction of duty to not publicly and enthusiastically advocate for moving forward with this project. I take the last vote to reflect Stoughton taxpayers feeling frustrated with the previous inefficiency of town's public services and anger at many years of mismanagement, and that is not necessarily the fault of anyone here, but it is certainly our responsibility. So I tend to refute the notion that this is a revote. This is just the town having a crystal-clear plan to present to our voters. If yes, then this; if no, then that. Two options: yes, a new building that adequately meets the needs of our students, paid for with MSBA funding and a Prop 2 and 1/2, or the plan that Mr. Anzavino spoke about earlier; or no, temporary modulators without any financial aid, cutting of services across budgets to pay for them, and no capital improvements. The money will be spent either way, it just is a matter of how much bang we get for our buck. We live in a society where we are legally obligated to provide fair and appropriate public education to our children, and you may philosophically disagree with this as a moral and political concept, but legally, it's how we currently operate, and these children are just as important and just as valuable members of our community as you or I or any other taxpayers. And so, we as a town government should be championing this project loudly and proudly persuading our voters that this is both fiscally responsible, fiscally responsible and greatly beneficial. It isn't easy to get people on board with higher taxes, I know, so we must work together, residents, town meeting members, Select Board, school committee, and stakeholders, to get people excited for this incredible opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So I think we're done on last row on my left side, so I think we'll move on to the last row on the right side.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Marguerite Mitchell. I live at 140 Bergeron Way. I'm a longtime town meeting member and an even longer zoning board of appeals member. I speak to you tonight as a former South School parent and a parent of three children who are in grades eight, 10, and 12 at the Stoughton High School. And I want to give you a perspective on what a new school can bring to my children and to our children and our community. My children attended the- who are in grades eight, 10 and 12 at the Stoughton High School. And I want to give you a perspective on what a new school can bring to my children and to our children in our community. My children attended the South School at the time with conditions that were almost as bad as what they are now. But at that time, everyone understood that the first priority was to build a new high school. My children now benefit from that new building and have educational opportunities that did not exist in the old high school building. The new high school provides a multitude of spaces, structures and equipment that enhances student learning and ultimately engagement. Modern science labs and equipment, theater stages and spaces, athletic facilities and training gyms, art studios and photography darkrooms are only a handful of the attributes of the new high school that give our students a chance to learn and develop their skills and interests in ways that never could have been done in the old high school. It makes our students competitive and gives them academic experiences on par with those in the rest of the state. The new high school keeps our students connected to their school, and this improves not just attendance, but learning, growth and educational outcomes. And we are now seeing the benefits of this new building. Stoughton High School received this year several commemorative recognitions. Stoughton High School received the Bronze Distinction on the AP School Honor Roll from the College Board this year. It was named by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as a school of recognition due to its improvement in its accountability results and its decrease in chronic absenteeism this year. And a U.S. News and World Report recently named Stoughton one of the best high schools because it was ranked in the top 25% of 18,000 high schools in the nation. And our students themselves are benefiting from this high school. In fact, most recently, as you all probably know, we had a Stoughton High School student who was honored with winning the Stoughton 300th Anniversary Logo Contest. I don't think this would have been possible with our old building. And I am proud to live in a community that supports opportunity and growth. You're being asked tonight to approve moving forward with returning a vote on the new elementary school to the voters in Stoughton. Your vote tonight is not an approval of the new school itself. It's just an approval to allow this process to move forward. Should you approve this tonight, a lot more work still needs to be done. We need to return to town meeting.
Sorry, your time has just ended.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the final row?
Laura Callis. Laura Callis. I'm at 53 Sumner Street in Stoughton. And I am a homeowner. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a math professor at Curry College, so I appreciate the numbers. And I'm a mom to a third grader. In fact, we had 55 fifth graders from Stoughton come to Curry College, and we were all so impressed with how mature and caring and enthusiastic they were. And they and their teachers really do deserve a good place to go to school and a good place to work and to learn. And right now, they don't even have half of a library in the South. So that's been closed, and they've been taking library outside, but now it is December. But that point is kind of moot because we are going to, we're going to have to close the South School. We know from the working group that even if we rehabbed it, it wouldn't solve our crowding problem because laws have changed and we would be losing space if we rehabbed it. So we can't rehab it and we'd lose space. I'm a taxpayer, and I feel like the alternative to not building a new school would be those modulators. They're going to cost $22 million, which seems like a waste of money because they're only going to be lasting for 10 years. So I would really appreciate it if the town used my money well and invested in a new school, which we could get grant money from, and it will last longer. I think that we really need to revote because in the people that I've been talking to, there's been a lot of confusion. Some people thought that it was only the South School students that were going to be affected, which is not true because we're redistricting the entire town because the demographics have changed and the neighborhoods have changed. So all of the students are going to be affected, all of the elementary school students. And three of the four elementary schools that are going to be left are going to be getting modular buildings, and so those students are going to be affected as well. I think that when I have conversations with people about this, they start to think differently, and a lot of them haven't voted because they thought it was just a South School area thing. And I think that they will come vote. And so we'll really get a better picture of what the whole town really wants if we have a second vote. And for folks who still want to vote no, they're welcome to vote no. Nobody is stopping them. And so we can really find out what people want. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Maris Lady Olivo, Precinct 4. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me and others tonight. I have lived in Stoughton for two years now. It's not a long time, but enough to know that it's a great town to raise a family, and I hope that it continues that way. However, as a first-time mom, I am very concerned about the current elementary school situation. My son is only three now, but he will be in the public school system in a couple of years. Although he will not attend the new school because he'd be assigned to the Gibbons, I know that the outcome of this will directly affect him and his peers in many negative ways than I would like to think about. We have been granted a second opportunity from the MSBA for a revote. And I think it's only fair that we allow residents to have all the facts to make an informed decision in April. For this reason, I urge you to support this revote for the benefit of current and future generation, as well as the long-term success of this town, which I now call my home and I hope to continue calling it my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final speakers? Come join us.
Allison Reddington, Precinct 3. Just thank you guys for going through all of this. I know it's late. Everyone wants to go home. I'll be really fast. My kids are not going to personally get too benefit from the new school as far as attending it. They are 10 and 17, so it's simply just the right thing to do going forward. So that's why I'm here. Couple things I just want to touch on. These guys did a great job explaining a lot of things, but one, I just want to explain one more time that legally, this absolutely qualifies for a revote, as I broke down in my letter to each of you. Also, just a quick note, debt exclusions are significantly lower in Stoughton than all of our surrounding towns. If you are not sure what those numbers look like, I am happy to provide that information, but we're crushing it in Stoughton. Tax rates have actually decreased over the last 10 years. And again, last week, it was announced that we have another decrease coming because we are led by people that are being financially thoughtful and responsible in this town. There was a feasibility study done. This all started a while back. The South Elementary School was essentially deemed totaled. Okay? So if your car was damaged beyond repair, they would say, "It's time for a new car. This is not fixable." That's where we are. That's where we are now. Modular options, I mean, the prices are high, the value is low, safety is inadequate, unmet needs are going to persist. It's a Band-Aid, not a solution. It's spending, not investing, which is not financially responsible. So when we're talking about fiscal responsibility in the future, this is not wise. If we do this, invested families like myself are not going to want to stay in a town that doesn't value education. The teachers are not going to want to stay in a community working that does not value education. They're going to leave, and they're going to go to other towns that do. No tax increase is not an option. Neither is negligence. That's where we're at. Thank you for listening.
Any other speakers? Okay, so the citizen comment portion of our agenda is over. We're going to move on to the next item. And rather than move into the Select Board comments, town meeting- Oh. Ms. Redd has already spoken, so we're, yeah, so she's already had an opportunity to speak. So we are going to move on to the next item. And so this is the item six, interest and process for calling a special town meeting regarding the South School. I know it is late, but I'm just going to read a couple of things that are relevant to this, I believe. But I'll try not to belabor this. So the letter that's a part of our package, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I do want to just lay out some of the options that we have. I'll read this letter. Following members of the Select Board, sorry, fellow members of the Select Board, as you are likely aware, Article 15 of Special Town Meeting 2024 passed 111 to 34. That was a petitioned article that garnered 2,400 signatures. Its intent was to ask the Select Board to call for a vote of a debt exclusion to fund construction of a consolidated South Elementary School. Though the number of signatures on the petition is impressive and the passing margin of the vote by town meeting significant, the measure was nevertheless non-binding on the Select Board. It is now incumbent upon us to choose a path forward that best represents our duty to all citizens of the town of Stoughton. What follows are our available options and where relevant, the timelines that we need to follow to move forward. We need to be especially mindful of the fact that the original appropriation in May 2024 has expired, so a new appropriation by town meeting is required if we choose to authorize a revote. Option one, we do nothing. The Select Board has the right to choose to take no action. In this scenario, a new appropriation is not necessary, and we will have, we will not have to hold an election for debt exclusion. There is no calendar that follows as there are no actions for us to take. The impact of that board decision are widely known. Option two, do something. If we choose to move forward with an election and therefore also a new appropriation, we have a few options. There are also several constraints we need to be aware of. Town Council, the interim town clerk, and I have identified the following constraints. The MSBA has extended the deadline for a new election by, to April 5, 2025. After that date, we will no longer be eligible for $47 million in financial assistance from the MSBA. Number two, the Stoughton Town Charter and Master General Law require the Select Board and Town Meeting comply with the following schedule for Town Meeting, also elections. A, the Select Board must open a special town meeting warrant. B, the warrant must remain open for seven days. C, after the warrant has closed, special town meeting cannot begin any sooner than 42 days later. D, at least 35 days must elapse between the time an election is called for and the date of that election. E, the ballot measure must be voted on within 90 days of a town meeting appropriation. Additionally, I do make the assumption that we would be targeting the April 1 election, which will allow for cost savings and fit with the deadline established by MSBA. So there are two options under the do something. First option, 2A, schedule a town meeting followed by an election. And I do lay out the calendar here. So this would be, in my mind, the most logical path, the one which we are certainly most accustomed to. In this scenario, we would likely have to follow the following calendar in order to address the schedule requirements above. And I'm not going to read through all of these, but the key points for us, the next most significant, most current, or most pressing deadlines would be that by December 10, next Tuesday, we would have to open the warrant, and we'd have to close it by the 17th of December, the following week. And that would allow for, if we miss those, actually, the Tuesday after that is Christmas Eve, the following Tuesday is New Year's Eve. So if we miss it by that date, we lose half a month. That would give us, that would have a special town meeting called roughly February 3. 42 days after closing the warrant would actually bring us to January 28. And we typically start town meetings on a Monday. The next Monday would be February 3. If that's voted affirmatively by Town Meeting, that appropriation, the Select Board can meet the following day, February 4, to call for an election. We don't need to, so long as we vote to have an election by February 25. So the last part of that month, we still will be within that 35-day requirement by Master General Law to have an election. That will get us to April 1. Our second option, this is to schedule an election followed by a special town meeting. So this is the reverse order. Though it is typical for us to vote on an appropriation before we hold a town-wide election, the law does not require us to complete these tasks in that order. It is equally lawful to hold an election followed by an appropriation by Town Meeting. The following is a timeline that follows this order of events and considers all of the above listed constraints. In this case, by next week, we would have to call for an election. That election would take place, or would probably take place roughly around January 14. After that election, if it is, if the results are affirmative for the vote, then we can call a special town meeting on January 21, followed by, that would be opening the town meeting warrant on January 21, closing it on the 28th, and then having a special town meeting on March 17. So the additional notes to consider, if we choose to do nothing, sorry, if we choose to do something, we ought to be mindful that annual local elections are scheduled for April 1, and the annual town meeting is scheduled for May 5. I have confirmed that none of the dates for either option A, 2A or 2B fall on work-restricted religious holidays, though there are both state and religious holidays scattered throughout this time period, which may impact scheduling. Additionally, none of these dates fall during a school vacation period. Based on our understanding of the process, constraints and Master General Law, I recommend option 2A if the board chooses to call for an election. I did also want to mention that I sent this over to Brian Winter, just our town council, and he wrote a letter that he sent to everybody on the board. If you haven't had a chance to read it, I'm just going to read briefly. I'm ready to confirm that I have reviewed Chairman Cavie's memorandum. And while I have no comment on the policy question within, I want to add that I agree with the list of options and the dates and timelines set therein, set forth therein. While, of course, the ultimate choice is up to the board, the dates and timelines are legally viable under the Charter and state law, in particular, General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21 CM, I would also note that I have compared option 2A and 2B with the guidance available from the Division of Local Services, and I believe them to be consistent with that guidance. And he included a attachment that provides that same appropriation followed by an election or an election followed by an appropriation scenarios. I won't read the rest of this, except to mention that he does, he does also want people to just be mindful, the board to be mindful of the fact that during this time period, we will also be moving towards an annual town meeting. There'll be budgets, discussions, there'll be finance committee meetings, there'll be a lot going on. That we have to also just be mindful of the fact that if we are requiring town meeting to have a, we'll have a special on March 17, followed by a annual, less than two months later, month and a half later, that the boards and committees that have to review these things will be impacted. So I just wanted people to be mindful of that as well. So those are our options. Our role in this is not necessarily to make a decision based on the merits of the project itself, but in my view, somewhat administrative. And I'll leave it at that. I'll stop talking. I'm kind of late on punching.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What would you like first? A motion on option one, do nothing, and then option two, do something, and then go from there, or just go right to?
I think anybody who makes a motion for whatever option they think is the right one, if there's a second, then we vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion. The motion is option 2A, the same as your strong recommendation, and that is to schedule a special town meeting followed by an election.
Okay. So there's a motion made by Ms. Roberts.
And that we hold a meeting next Tuesday.
Yeah, if we decide to follow a particular path that has a schedule, then-
We should probably do that in one motion. Could we do that? Would you accept that as a friendly addition?
Yes, I would accept that, Mr. Gito. Yes.
What's the addition? I'm sorry, I didn't-
Oh, just to follow your schedule.
Okay.
To follow your schedule and to set a meeting to open the town meeting, open the-
Warrant.
With the warrant.
Next Tuesday.
The 10th.
Perfect. So there's a motion, that was Ms. Roberts. Is there a second? Mr. Gito seconded it? Okay. So all in favor of option 2A, which would be schedule a special town meeting followed by an election? by an election. Our next meeting will be on December 10, where we will open a special town meeting warrant and proceed from there. So that item... And for all members of the public who spoke either pro for or against this project, I do want to thank you for taking the time. It is very late, and I appreciate your civil participation. I know it's a lot of work, and so I thank you for it. So we can move on to select board comments if people have any, or we can just adjourn.
I have a comment.
Okay. Okay, motion to adjourn.
I would ask you again, if you have a written comment, please send it to us. There were things that we could not possibly have written down and that we may miss. Thank you.
Was that a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion to adjourn by Vice Chair Carrera, seconded by Mr. McCrisky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Meeting adjourned. It's 10:42. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.